Okay, Alex.
Yep.
Okay.
I got your agents to the line. Until you ring up with the one which is on the list, one nation under God, indivisible, with whose interest we are all.
I got the same issue that you did. I just put it upside down. I'll just do it this way. Okay, first thing on the agenda. Do we have any minutes, Mr. Martin?
No.
No minutes. Okay.
While we're waiting for our first appointment, I did try and get in touch with the attorney, our special counsel. Couldn't make the night's meeting. However, I want to put a proposal out to this board. Next week Kathy is on vacation. So Monday after, there probably won't be much of an agenda. So what I'd like to do is maybe move the board meeting to 5:00, 5:30. See if I can get him here on the 19th at 5:30. Just open the meeting, go into executive session, and then just come out of executive session, if that's what the board would like.
That's fine with me. It's fine with the other two?
That would be the 19th.
I don't know what you're scheduling. It's the same night we're scheduled, just coming a little earlier.
I can go earlier.
Well, Glenn, I think this 5:30 is your earliest, right?
Okay. I don't even want to change this right now.
But I'm just saying that way, because if we hold a regular session, it's basically going to be a very light agenda. And I don't think there's anything really pressing, so, okay. Again, while we're waiting for 6:35. Per directive of the board, Dave DeRozier and I did go out to Bittersweet Lane and met with Mr. Senical. We reviewed the current structure. It was decided to do, try and do a step structure, basically a two-tiered. He was going to bank the ground up to the first level of stones. Then take the rest of it, set back outside that eight-foot buffer outside. And so he was basically just going to have like a half that is about four feet tall, three, four feet tall, and the other half will be at ground level because he's banking the road up. They didn't have any problem with that, so I believe that was a solution that came about amicably.
So will any of the structure be on town property? The slopes?
It's still within the four-foot buffer or the eight-foot right-of-way. But it's making it where it's not going to stop a vehicle within that eight-foot right-of-way. The forefoot will be ground height, and then it'll go be like a step up to the next level.
You figure there'd be no liability to the town?
The step up is outside of the eight-foot right-of-way.
How about the area that's within the town property?
The ground is going to be, he's going to make it so the ground slopes up to it. So if someone comes up, they're going to go up a little incline, go across it, and come back down.
So the town won't have any liability if somebody hits it?
No.
That's the question I'm asking.
And David and I did actually go down Cold Hill on our way back and was looking at any other potential structures that were there. There wasn't anything that resembled what was at the Bittersweet site. So, you know, there's a few rocks, there's some trees, there's some mailboxes, things of that nature, but nothing that would stop a vehicle as quickly as that structure would.
So what are we going to do to close that issue? Or are you going to consider it closed at this time?
Unless the board wants me to officially write something up, I consider it closed because Mr. Senical was there, a couple of his neighbors were there, his girlfriend was there, so they all heard the same thing.
As long as there's going to be no way there's going to be any liability to the town, I don't have any problem closing it right now. But if there's going to be any way...
The issue is, Jay, no matter what, people are going to sue the town. Okay? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You can say, is there going to be no liability? People will always try and sue the town because the town has deep pockets.
Oh, yeah.
But David was satisfied, and he's the one who was quoting the standards at them. So as far, as long as he was satisfied, then as far as I'm concerned, it's a closed matter.
Okay, so there's nothing in writing, it's just verbal agreement between you, Mr. DeRozier, and Mr. Senical?
Yes.
Are the two members happy with that?
I don't see an issue with it. I mean, it's...
I'm happy with the resolution. I think we might want to get something in writing just saying this is, and that's, and not so everybody can come back at us, but if he sells the property, new property owners don't have to go through this issue again if another person...
So you want something officially in writing from the board or from me?
The town. The town's right-of-way, where the work is being done.
It's in town's right-of-way.
So we don't need to write, I mean, I don't see why I need to write a letter. It's the town's property right-of-way. Town has the right to do with it what it feels it needs to.
What Jen is saying is just to outline exactly what was agreed upon so that if somebody else comes along in the future and wants to take it and extend it into that eight-foot buffer lane, the upper portion, that we can show that no blame it, no. Anything above grade level is not going to be allowed within the eight-foot right-of-way. I think that's all Jen was trying to say.
Yeah, just to stop the issue from coming up again.
As you say, Glenn, if it isn't writing, it ain't so.
No, I'm just saying they don't, they just, they can't do it anyway, so that was the issue here in the first place.
But the problem is, other people do it. If we don't know about it, then people point that other people to. So it's up to the board. If you want me to write something, I'll write something.
It may be in writing. I don't see it posing as an issue, but it also, it's the right-of-way of the town to do what they feel is their property.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll go along with Jen. You can make it part of our meeting minutes if you want, or any way you want to write up, just so it's in writing.
That's, yeah.
That we discuss it on this night, that that's the resolution. It can be part of the meeting minutes. It doesn't have to be anything special.
It doesn't have to be a hand-delivered letter. It just needs to be somewhere.
Oh, it's going to have to be a police call because it...
But I would recommend that. I would recommend that goes to a town council, just to ensure there isn't anything that shouldn't be in that letter.
Okay.
Well, it's not going to be a letter, just a meeting minutes.
I thought you said you wanted a letter.
You said you wanted it written. Meeting minutes. Sorry, meeting minutes anyways. It's going to be documented anyways in our meeting minutes.
So which way do you want? Do you want to just put the minutes suffice?
Because we just discussed it.
No, I want a letter.
Okay, we'll do a letter.
I'm going to be difficult.
No, you're just being safety for the town, that's all. Like Chris says, if it's not writing, it doesn't exist.
Yeah, 6:35.
If anybody's got any cell phones or anything like that, please put them on vibrate or off. Thank you.
I put mine on vibrate.
I didn't say you didn't.
I did too. I just had a little check.
How about your phone? Is your phone on vibrate?
No, it's off.
Oh, okay.
It's off completely. I got 6:38, so the first appointment's 6:35, the Chicopee Sportsman's Club. Representative here?
Yes.
Come up and please give your name, address, so on, for the record.
Mr. Seck?
Yep.
Good. My name is Dick Mastadde, I'm the current president of the Chicopee Sportsman's Club. I've been there for, an officer for 45 years. I'm just trying to get a feel of the town. I've, we've already talked to our attorney, that somewhere in the future, I hope it never happens, but all the work that we've put into that organization through the years, if it falls, and you know, when we're gone, years from now, what do we do with the land? We don't, the board of directors at the present time, we don't feel, and the membership voted to, for this, we don't feel that we should leave it to new people coming in. They've been there a year or two and they pay their dues, they don't do anything except use the, you know, facilities. We don't want them to get the land and sell it or whatever. We like to leave it either to the town or DCR or whatever. We've already dealt with the DCR several years ago, and that didn't turn out too well. We wanted to keep control of our land. But we had good discussion with them, good rapport, and we always had a good rapport with the town. We let the police use our grounds and qualify and everything. But the attorney said just try to talk to the town and just be aware that somewhere, you might not see it, but down the line somewhere, if you feel it's a good idea to keep in mind that, you know, we'd be more than happy to leave it to the town if they fall. Because each year goes by, and the way times are now, years ago, people joined, their husband had one job, the wife didn't work, stayed home, took care of the kids. Now, 45 years later, times are different now. The guy's got two jobs, his wife works, they just want to, they pay their dues to go up there and you want to use the grounds and go home. So it's hard to get directors, it's hard to get officers to take care of the place. And with the money coming in every year and all, you have to have a board, nine people to take care of the money. You just can't have one or two people in other organizations taking care of the money. It doesn't work. So that's, that's the thing.
How many acres are there?
It's over 400.
Wow.
Yeah. And we're just in the process of buying another 12 from Mr. Cook down at Cook's Corner. So we have a 20-foot right-of-way going in. And, yeah, I would, I would sleep a lot easier in my casket if I knew that somewhere down the line, all our hard work, and it goes, if the town would, hopefully if the town takes it, leave it the way it is, kind of, so people can go in and hunt and fish, and there's a pond up there, we've got a man-made pond, and that's our feelings.
Before any select board, no matter if it's us or somebody in the future makes a decision, we would pass it on to the board of assessors, the board of health, the conservation committee, and get their input, and then make a decision based upon all the data that would come in to see if it's an asset or a liability to the town.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I mean, that could be five years, 10 years, 15, 20, 25, so, I would think, you know...
Hopefully.
Hopefully, I would hope so. But I would think when that time comes, and then that's when you bring it to the town. I mean, I mean, who knows how the town would feel at that point, whether or not, or who's to say 10, 15 years from now, things kind of turn around a little bit, yeah, but, you know, people are starting to be more involved and, you know.
Yeah, hopefully.
Yeah.
Because we're all volunteers.
Yeah, I know.
Like the seal lands state of way is.
Absolutely.
That's our making.
Yeah.
All right, that's it for me.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, 6:40, Forge Pond, Doreen, Dory?
Good evening.
Good evening. Good, how are you?
Good.
Okay, my name is Dory Galen, and I'm here tonight representing Friends of Forge Pond, a group of concerned citizens dedicated to preserving, protecting, and providing and improving Forge Pond in Granby. About a year ago, we became aware of, aware that the dam and dike located at Forge Pond was deemed a significant hazard structured by the State, a State Office of Dam Safety, and was rated in poor condition during a 2014 inspection. We discovered that the town was issued a non-compliance notice and was ordered to remove or repair the structures. We are here tonight to urge the board to repair the structures for a variety of reasons, which I have outlined in here.
I want for Chris to... I want for Kathy to...
There you go. On page two of the document I've just given you, we've listed some historical highlights of the dam, dike, and pond. Amongst these is the significant history for fishing that extends beyond our local community. In the 1970s and early 80s, when the Belrose family ran a bait and tackle shop, soldiers stationed at Westover Air Force Base were common fishermen on the pond, renting boats and buying supplies and using their time off to fish in its peaceful waters. Many of the current homes located along the shores were summer vacation cabins before they were converted to homes. Forge Pond has been visited by many people beyond our immediate community. On page three, we have listed some recreational highlights of the pond. There is an abundance of wildlife that calls this pond its home. In the past, the pond was well-stocked with a variety of fish. Record-breaking fish have been caught in its waters. Large snapping turtles have been sighted. Since the town's purchase of the conservation land adjacent to the pond, the open space committee issued a report in which it considers the area to be a valuable town asset to be developed for recreational use. The addition of hiking trails and improved boat ramp and designated shore fishing areas would enhance access to the pond for our community. On page four, we've listed some significant wildlife assets. Many species call this pond their home, and many others use the pond for feeding and mating purposes. Among these species are numerous endangered species. Approximately, the approximately 200 years this pond has been in existence has created and continues to maintain a large area of surrounding wetlands. The minimal development surrounding the pond has created an environment where nature remains virtually undisturbed and easily visible. It is a nature enthusiast's dream. On page five, we've listed some past and future educational opportunities for families, students, and others that can be accessed using Forge Pond. Improving access to the pond and the surrounding conservation land could provide a wide variety of educational experiences for young and old alike. On page six, we have listed reasons why Forge Pond is an important community resource. The current size of Forge Pond maintains private wells along its shores and tributaries, helps to regulate storm water flow, and is used as a source of water in emergency situations. For these reasons and more, Friends of Forge Pond support the repair of Forge Pond Dam and Dyke. We need your support and that of the town to repair the structures and save the existing ecosystem. So I ask you now, do you support the repair of Forge Pond Dam and Dyke?
If you're asking me personally, we don't have the report back on what it would cost to repair. The last I heard, Mr. Martin, correct me if I'm wrong, we had an issue with DEP going out and cleaning some of the trees, but that's been resolved and to be doing it...
When was DEP? Early, the conservation commission.
Okay, but with DEP's advice, when I have the...
Yes. And basically, they have issued a conditional RDA at their last meeting. We are currently, that has been forwarded to the tree company, and we're trying to set up a pre-construction, for lack of a better word, meeting with a representative from the conservation, so everybody's on the same page. And hopefully it'll move forward.
Until we get the study and we have all the data, there's nothing we can really evaluate at this point in time.
What I'm asking, I think, is what do you, what would, besides the phase-two study, is there, I mean, would that affect how you would proceed? I mean, is that the deciding factor? Is it the cost? That's the deciding factor between saving the pond or removing the dam?
Well, I think even myself personally, cost is always a consideration. And having no idea what it would cost, I couldn't make a decision at all right now. And then we couldn't even know if we could put in for a grant to hopefully cover some of the costs, because we don't know all the issues. Until we get the study, it's like doing what we do on other grants. We get engineering studies to support the justification why we want to get the money for the grant. Now, hopefully this study might give us something, but we don't know until we get it and read it.
Okay, I understand that. Is there some...
So you're going back to your original question. And again, I'm not speaking for the board, I'm speaking for myself as a member of the board. Yes.
Thank you.
I do support it. And obviously, when it comes time to look at cost and things like that, that definitely comes into play a factor. But, you know, supporting it and trying to look at all available options to the town to save it is what we need to do. It's an important part of the town. There's a lot of history there, plus it's important to the residents that live around there as well. So yes, I would, I do support it as a board member. And I would like to try, look at all different options that are available to the town when a lot of that data starts coming back to us.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Do you want me to tell you I support it?
Yes.
Okay. I figured you already knew that.
Yes, I do.
No.
And I appreciate that.
Personally, not speaking for the board, but myself, I do support it for various reasons, and I will fight to keep the dam and the pond.
And me, I just, I'm a data person. You've got to show me the facts before I make a decision on which way to go.
Put some heart into it.
My wife says I don't have a heart.
On page nine, I believe it is, there's a list of things that would help us as an organization if the board would be willing to consider for any of us, for anything to work on for us.
Well, before we would fund anything, it would have to go before the people, the town, meeting and their article, and they're the ones that actually approve it. It's not us.
Well, it's my understanding the phase-two study's been funded already?
That's, that's correct. That's the one we're waiting on. But if you wanted more construction, more studies, more information, then an article would have to be written, approved by the select board to go forward, town meeting, then the people will make the decision if they want to spend their money on it. You got nonprofit, what do you, what would you need for us to become nonprofit?
We are a nonprofit.
Okay.
Maybe the boarding is wrong?
Says support efforts of nonprofit, nonprofit to facilitate funding.
Oh, just to kind of help us, enable us to do fundraising events like, we want to do some fishing derbies and scavenger hunts on the pond, things like that, you know, to kind of, I guess, help us with what we would need to do and what sort of processes we have to go through.
And again, as a board member, any way we can support, at least I can support it, I will.
Thank you.
I definitely will. I think, again, I don't need to repeat it, but it's a lot of history for Granby there. It's an important piece of Granby. And truly, it's important to the people and the families that live around there for many years, and I'm hoping that stays that way.
Thank you.
So is the, I got extra kayaks.
Okay.
Thanks for that plug.
No problem.
Okay.
Eddie, do it?
Yes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for the story. It's great.
Okay.
Take it, going for the one-day liquor license.
Mr. Christian, I was nine, I was seven.
Wow, 70, I'm only three years behind you.
There you go. I didn't hear you, so I think you called me up.
Yeah, what, one-day liquor license?
Okay, we have, we have an application for a one-day liquor license.
Yeah, the Mac of the Army.
Yep, Richard LaValle.
Yep, it's my mother's 90th birthday, and it's going to be friends and family of hers. And it's going to be for six, four, five hours, that's it.
Okay, they are going to be serving wine...
And beer.
And beer.
Right.
And basically, they are buying it through an authorized vendor on the A-B-C-C list. Start time, the date of it is November 27, 2019, between 5:00 PM and 10:00 PM.
Right.
210 PM.
You said November?
November 27th, yes.
The day before Thanksgiving.
We're going to consider that our Thanksgiving.
Do I come? My birthday's the day after.
Yeah, you can come.
And they're expecting, over the course of the five-hour, or of the five hours, 50 plus or minus people.
50 people.
Does the board have any questions of Mr. LaValle? Do you want to look at it, or no?
No, straightforward. So it's going to be that pavilion, or you're going to... Is there a rain date to go into the Mac?
We're doing it under the church.
Right, under the church, okay.
Yeah. They held a license before in Virginia for one day, for a reunion for a group of Marines. So I know the deal.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve the one-day liquor license for your mother's 90th birthday party.
Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion on the one-day liquor license? Hearing no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
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 It's passed unanimously. A one-day liquor license is approved for the 27th of November, the Mac of the Army.
That was hard. Thank you very much.
Tell her happy birthday for us.
I will.
Yes.
Okay, I was going to call the fire chief up, and then we'll get all our appointments out of the way.
Yep.
The fire chief?
I beg your forgiveness, Sal, I'd use a kind of playing with my throat and voice today. So I'm here today to propose, or submit to you a proposal to the select board with the apparatus chosen by the apparatus replacement committee to replace our current engine one. The scope of the proposal extends to the replacement of engine one and necessary equipment for the apparatus. The fire department apparatus committee is comprised of several members of the department with varying experiences with trucks, pumps, fire-ground operations. The committee includes Deputy Chief Bruce Carpenter, Lieutenant Tyler, Lieutenant Tyler Yvonne Alione, firefighter EMTs Colin Mick, Craig Gagny, Raymond Warren, firefighter Andrew Balboni, and driver operator Bob Amla. The committee was chaired by firefighter Andrew Balboni. I, as fire chief, served in a technical advisory role and did not take part in the final vote for the selection of the apparatus. The committee spoke with five vendors representing six different apparatus manufacturers. This included Greenwood for E1, CNS Specialty for Toyn, New England Fire Apparatus and Equipment for Smale and Spartan, Rosenbauer America for Rosenbauer, and Minuteman Trucks for Pierce. Each vendor represented their respected apparatus professionally and were great to work with. They were open to hear our specifications while offering recommendations to build the best apparatus for the needs of our community. The members of the committee spent many hours working on preparing specifications for the apparatus. Initially, we started off with determining what was needed for the apparatus to do. Next, we discussed potential expanded uses and firefighter safety. Finally, before we met with the vendors, the committee voted on the initial specifications. It should be noted that many votes took place to ensure that we did not veer too far off track while moving forward. We met with each vendor a minimum of two times. The first was to prevent our initial requirements and specifications. This gave the vendors opportunity to go back and work up a presentation with drawings and specifi, excuse me, suggestions that they may have. The second visit, they made their presentations. Some vendors were asked back several times to ensure that we gave each manufacturer the best and fairest opportunity to present the apparatus committee and answer questions we may have had. Once each vendor made their presentations, the committee spent much time sifting through the various proposals. They were too immediately dismissed as the costs of the apparatus exceeded the amount requested at town meeting. The remaining apparatus were all similar in cost. Committee members looked at the varying capabilities of the apparatus options and how closely they met the specifications we initially sought. In the end, the committee voted. Unanimously, the apparatus committee felt that the Pierce enforcer was the best option for the community's fire suppression needs. This apparatus comes the closest to our initial specifications. The enforcer will have a wheelbase smaller than we had expected, with the water capacity we have always desired. This apparatus is a tandem axle, heavy-duty truck capable of supporting and distributing the weight to allow us access throughout the town. It will carry 2,500 gallons of water and a pump capacity of 1,500 gallons per minute with each, excuse me, which will enhance firefighting operations with the benefit of using lesser amounts of water yet being more effective. Oh, I missed a line. Oh, I missed a line. Inclusive, the pump will be installed with an attached compressed air foam system, which will enhance firefighting operations with the benefit of using lesser amounts of water yet being more effective. It will come with a light tower that can be raised during periods of limited visibility to illuminate the emergency grounds, making the area safer to operate around. To meet newly adopted OSHA standards, the hose bed will have a hard cover. When opened, it will provide a measure of fall protection to keep firefighters safe while working up on top of the apparatus. The cost of this apparatus came to $698,309, with a prepay amount of $672,567. If the payment is made early, there would be a remainder of $27,424, which could be used to outfit the apparatus with necessary equipment that was not part of the initial purchase price. This equipment would include replacement of 20-year-old large diameter hose, a new positive pressure ventilation fan, thermal imager, gas meter, power saws, and tools, just to name a few items. In speaking with the Pierce representative, Jason Henske, he pointed off, out to us, that some fire departments try to pack the whole world in one truck. They add on all the bling and the gadgets. They can have the coolest truck. Some departments try to design an apparatus to fill too many roles and can overbuild a truck. Others feel they add enough and often are disappointed in the end. He was impressed with our thought process in designing this apparatus. We've designed a no-frills engine, add only items necessary for safety and to meet the desired uses of this apparatus while meeting with the needs of the community. In closing, I wish to thank the members of the apparatus committee for their time and effort they put into this project. More importantly, we, the department, wish to thank the town residents for supporting us in approving this purchase. So I'm here today to respectfully submit to the board this proposed apparatus for your consideration and approval. And I have brought with me, if you want to pass, grab, want to pass around, a picture of an apparatus very similar to what we have spec'd out.
This is the 700,000 to get approved the last town meeting, right?
That is correct.
Well, since I'm not a firefighter, I wouldn't know what side is up, so if your committee approves it, I don't have no problem, to be honest, as long as I stay under budget.
And this will take Engine One out of service?
It will. Engine One is at its end of life, and we're experiencing some issues with it now.
I read that in the report.
Is Engine One going to be, what are you going to do, scrap it or try to trade it in?
I'm going to defer that to seeking the recommendation and advice of the board, Mr. Martin, and whomever else may have some, some insight into what they would like to see done with it.
Well, I'll leave that to Mr. Martin to figure out how much value it has and which way to go.
I can tell you, in speaking with Jason Henske, the Pierce manufacturer, even on a trade-in, he said we'd be lucky to get $5,000 for it. I have seen these go up on auction, and collectors and people who like driving around fire trucks in their own time, you can get a bit more, it happens. Are you talking about the newer ones? It's all a mix. This particular truck is not stainless steel. Toine was the only one that offered stainless steel. But this, this truck came to being, and one of the biggest concerns that we had as a department, and we were kind of kept on track with this with Deputy Chief Carpenter, was the wheelbase. We want to make sure we can get this thing around town.
How short are wheelbases, this one, in your car? Pumper? In a circle turn?
It's, it's, so it is a little bit larger than, than the other apparatus, but it's actually, if I'm correct, a little less than our tanker. And if you'll see the way this truck is designed, you have a cab over, which means the cab is over the front wheel, as opposed to a traditional truck where the cab is behind the wheel. This offers us an ability to have a greater turn radius.
But it's not going to exceed the turn radius of the existing one?
No.
Okay.
Not of the tanker, no. No, it will be a hair more than our engines, because this is dual axle.
But this is replacing the tanker?
It, no, it's replacing Engine One.
I thought, what is, what is the tanker, one or three?
Well, actually, the tanker is Tanker One.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
You're talking the real truck.
Yeah, Engine Three is the real truck, which will be replacing the?
With the mini bumper.
The mini, which hopefully will be here very soon.
But this is replacing the pumper that we have, Engine One?
Correct. It's the 1994 Schmeel.
That's great, Chief. Thank you, yourself and the committee, too, for, it's a lot of hard work and a lot of time went into it.
They spend a lot of time, don't they?
Yeah, especially with all those different companies and, you know, seeing what their proposals are and things like that. Takes a lot.
Thank you. I will convey that to them.
Chief, can I ask?
Yes.
What is the lifespan of a truck? And I know it's going to differ based on wear and tear and how hard it's used, but average.
So, the short answer is 20 years is where NFPA kind of looks at the end life of a truck. We were able to extend this five years.
Yeah, I was looking like 25 years.
Yeah.
I don't know if the car passed four.
What I will say is NFPA also recommends in their appendix at the end of, it's NFPA 1901, which has to do with the specification requirements for fire apparatus. In Appendix A, I believe, A or D, it states that after 12 years, apparatus should really be going to a reserve status. That's not a reality for a community such as us. So it's also a time that at 12 years, depending on the condition of the truck, if you're going to refurbish a truck, that's when you do it.
That's when you do it.
And that will extend the life. We've just been fortunate that we've had a great staff that has done an incredible job in keeping up with the apparatus. And some of the things that we've experienced over the last years with, with fire trucks and the different apparatus are beyond our control. I mean, trucks break, just like cars.
Cars, yeah.
But the, the members have done a great job to this point, and we were able to extend this truck.
Do you just want a direction from the board, or do you want a?
Authorized with the proceeding of the award.
Okay. So then we need a motion?
Yes, please.
Okay.
I will make a motion that we?
What's the name?
Pierce Enforcer, is that?
Correct.
I'm sorry, just?
The company is Minuteman Trucks.
Minuteman Trucks?
Yes.
There you go. Easy.
I will make, I will make the motion that we go forward with the purchase of Pierce Enforcer from Minuteman Truck.
What was the amount again, Chief?
In the amount of $698,309, I believe.
Depends on?
Or that was the prepay?
That was the prepay. The, the amount the town allowed was 700.
Not to exceed 700,000. That was what we voted?
Yeah. The town said they could have a max of 700,000.
I'll second Jen's motion.
Okay, any further discussion on this new pumper truck? Hearing no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes are unanimous, so it's carried forward.
I thank the board very much, and again, the committee thanks you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move into our departmental reports.
We need to review and confirm the same mark.
We can stick that with the fire departments.
What are you looking for?
I was just looking on the head, getting ready for the warrant.
He was just getting ready for the warrant, so he was wondering if the physicals were already on, and I'm like, they're not on mine.
They got FY 19-83.
Should be on the one that was put down.
Oh, they're on the one that was put down.
Okay.
Cappy's on top of it.
I noticed there was a lot of accidents in Granby.
Oh, it was awful last week.
I know, I know, the last two weeks, but fortunately, nobody, nobody was hurt.
How did that motorcyclist?
Uh, from what I read in the report, he laid the bike down, so he probably had engine guards, I'm guessing on it, to keep it following on him.
I hope. I drove by, it looked like his bike was under a car.
Well, that could have been, but if he had engine guards, it kept it off of him.
Yeah, kept it off of him.
Yeah. Just, now, what do you think of his speed that's causing all these accidents in Granby?
Operator error.
Well, I, I won't deny that one at all.
Inability of a little pickup driver in high speeds.
Well, no, the, the issue is, is I, a lot of the operators of these, those vehicles have a tendency of not properly following the rules of the road, and then wonder why they end up either getting hit by somebody or hitting something. That's my own personal opinion.
Do you guys think so, Jim? All right, so I will make the motion that we approve departmental reports.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion on any of the department reports? Hearing nothing, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes are unanimous, so we'll move on to the warrants.
You can read them, you do such a good job.
All right, for fiscal year 19, we have two warrants. Warrant number 83, which is a bill-paying warrant in the amount of $96,956. And we also have warrant number 84, which is a bill-paying warrant in the amount of Then we also have for fiscal year 2020, warrant number five, in the amount of $87,888.39, which is a bill-paying warrant. Then we have warrant number six, which is a payroll warrant, in the gross amount of Then we have warrant number seven, which is basically a maintenance warrant, which is, which means we end up paying for the health insurance, the retirement, we're paying those over to the various agencies, taxes withheld, so on and so forth, in the amount And then we have maintenance, or warrant number eight, which is a bill-paying warrant in the amount of $537,142.15. And the reason that that warrant is so high is we are making a payment on the bond, the school bond, in the amount of $220,000 for interest, half, one-half of the interest for the year, and we are paying down a note in the amount of $127,000. So those are the two big bills on that one.
Now, for fiscal year 19, Chris?
I have one more. There'll be a cleanup warrant, and I'm waiting until everybody gets all their stuff in, and then it'll be processed.
Let me see, there'll be one more.
Okay, so I will make the motion to approve the warrants for fiscal year 2019, numbers 83 and 84, and for fiscal year 2020, warrants number five, six, seven, and eight.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion on the maintenance warrants? Hearing nothing, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, all the warrants passed unanimously? No, it's signature times.
No, it's signature times. We just need stamps.
Kathy's going to love you purple.
Got to leave my marks somehow, Jack.
That's fine, never mind, I'm easy.
And this way you know that it's accurate, that's original.
Yeah, because you, unless you're going to get color printer.
That's true.
Yeah, but you can see the difference between a copy and an original signature.
Yeah, you're right.
It's close.
They are raised a little bit, if you look at it really close.
You can rub your finger across it, and then you'll see the indent.
And that's why, the olden days, they take the pencils and shade them over the indent, so you can see what was written on the page under you.
I did not know that.
Yep.
You learn something new every day.
Yeah, when you indent down, you do it the page below. If you scrape it over with a lead pencil, you will see what the person wrote below for you.
Kind of like a graveyard, rubbing.
Is that for the carbon paper?
Yes.
Yeah.
The old-fashioned way of doing carbon paper, carbon paper.
There you go. That means you get a paycheck next time. You all settled the warrants, Mr. Martin?
I'll settle the warrants.
Okay, let's move on to the water main update. I got my whole package right here.
This, there was a concern from me. A, a email had been received from Keith Linkton, who is the engineer from Chapel Engineering that is representing us for the water main project. In it, he had indicated that we were going to be required to get an 8M permit from the MWRA, and according to his email, he indicated that it would take 10 months to obtain that permit. It raised some concerns on my part, because when we had met with South Haley District One Water Commissioners, there was no mention of an 8M permit unless it was in excess of 100,000 gallons a day. So what caused us now to have to have an 8M permit? Were discussions occurring between District One and MWRA that we weren't privy to? And that was a concern on my part, because if you have one thing, what else is occurring without our knowledge? Additionally to that, we had received a letter from Mass DOT Additionally to that, we had received a letter from Mass DOT indicating that due to the delay in potentially having to get the 8M permit, that our water main project was not going to be included with the Route 202 construction project. This was a letter dated July 26th from Peter Kavici, from, who was a District Highway Director in District, in District Two, which raised a concern, because we can't do this on our own, we're trying to piggyback on the original construction project in an attempt to save money. So, I had a big concern. A meeting was arranged between Jay, myself, this Keith Lincoln, Jeff Seer from South Hadley District One, and their engineer, water engineering consulting firm, Tony DeCruz of Ty &amp; Bond.
You might want to mention just right there that we received this on a Friday, and they wanted the meeting on a Tuesday, and there was no way, any kind of notice could have been, just to let you know, we weren't doing anything on our own, it was just, it is what it is.
During the course of the meeting, Mr. Seer indicated that, number one, he was still going to require a hydrology study from the town of Granby. Number two, that the 8M permit he was going to address with MWRA, even though it, from the email stream that I was looking at, it appeared that he was talking with Beth Carr regarding it, so I think he's backing off on that required permit. The other conditions that Mr. Seer indicated was that every parcel along the construction length is going to be required to have a domestic service installed, at a cost of $2,000 per connection. They also are indicating that if, and that everybody be required to connect, not have an option, that everybody be required to connect, every parcel. In addition to that...
How many people does that affect?
Well...
On the first stage, which we're talking, I don't have the exact numbers with me, we counted all the houses and the businesses.
I'm gonna say it's at least 50, minimum of 50.
Yeah, particularly with the apartment complex and everything like that, I would say about that.
Okay. In addition to that, the, everyone will be required to abandon their private well. Okay? To avoid the potential of cross-connections and/or contamination of the municipal water supply.
What's the same thing as on Morgan Street?
Yes. Now, he was trying to determine how many of our lots will require a fire line. We, Jay and I, potentially identified two. One, the housing complex, apartment complex right next to Stony Brook, and the Mass West site.
Because over 750 square feet.
Okay. Now, for those, they have a semi-annual billing. They won't be, have to pay the $2,000 connection fee, but they will, depending upon the size of the fire line, pay a semi-annual bill of, if it's a four-inch line, $100 every six months, a six-inch line would be $150 every six months, eight-inch line, $200, 10-inch, $250, and a 12-inch, $300. None of these cost factors have been run by any of our businesses yet, or anybody who is along this projected construction length. The other concern that was raised is that the dollar figure of $250 of linear feet, according to Ty &amp; Bond, is low. They look at it being more like 400 to 450 a linear foot.
Where did that discrepancy come from?
We got the 250 from South Hadley, because they said on Route 116, it cost them $213 a foot.
And when did that happen?
Last year.
That was last year?
So, Dave DeRosa said, "We'll use 250 a foot to be conservative." That's where the, our price came, I don't know where Titan Bonds came from.
Yeah, so...
But, I'm just saying.
That's what he said.
So, he's putting out there, so that could be a $3 million project versus a $1.2 million project. Okay? Just, just bringing everything to the board, just so you know. The other concern was, is South Hadley District One had a concern over the completeness of Chapel Engineering's drawings. So, they were going to require us to have their engineer, Ty &amp; Bond, do a peer review of Chapel's Engineering's drawings. Now, peer review, and correct me if I'm wrong, Glenn, in the past, that can run anywhere from $6,000 to $12,000, very easily.
Depending on how much is involved, yeah.
Okay? So, there's a $6,000 to $12,000 potential extra cost that we haven't budgeted for. I'm sure Chapel Engineering is going to be requiring probably an amendment to their contract, if they have to do other changes to the drawings. I'm still trying to get written verification from Mass DOT that they will still allow us to piggyback on their project, because when we met with Mr. Seer and Ty &amp; Bond and Chapel, they felt that we should be able to go to Mass DOT, because it wasn't a 10-month process to get the permit, but up to a 10-week process, which still kept us within the ballpark, and we could still bid conditional upon us getting the permit, if it is required. The, the issue that we are running into, and actually, I think Jay went to Mass DOT, along with Chapel, he could explain about that, but it's my understanding that, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jay, that Mass DOT is bidding this project, even though they don't have all the easements negotiated with all the property owners at this point in time.
That is a true statement, their bids going out 14 September of 2019, and they haven't contracted all the people that it's going to affect yet to get approved easements.
That is, that could be common practice for them, though, too.
But, I'm just saying, but... That if they don't have easements, they can't do the project, it could delay it. I'm just, I'm just trying to get everything out in front of the board, that's all.
Their big thing is, they're going out with the bid on 14 September, because if they don't get it out there, they're afraid they're gonna lose the project's money. That's the way it was explained by Douglas M. White, right here.
The other issue was, that was raised, is who was going to be responsible for paying for the police detail for the water main project? And on Thursday, a email was given out by Keith Lincoln. He had been speaking with Philbert Yee, who is the project engineer from Boston, asking the question regarding police detail for the construction proj, project, and according to the email from Mr. Yee, if this water main is approved by MWRA and South Hadley District One in a timely manner, and could be included as an endendum, Mass DOT will bear the cost for the police details, which could be a big number.
Yeah, like when we did the MVP grant application, the in-kind cost was $560,000.
Why wouldn't Mass DOT pay for it regardless? It's their project.
But, the water main is an addendum.
It's an addendum to the...
So, what they could do is say, okay, the road construction project is 20 million, our project is 2 million, we pay 2/24ths of the complete, the detail cost. They could do it that way.
I mean, and the majority of it's their, their project.
But, the issue is, is we will have to progress in front of the paving and their work, because we'll be digging the hole, then having to fill it in, prior to them being able to come through and pave and everything. So, we'll be ahead of them, so we'll be paying for details in advance, for work done in advance of where they are in the construction process.
The way I understood it, they're going to dig all that old asphalt up, and then...
But, still, they're saying, we are going to have to pay for the digging out and refilling of the trenches as we went along.
Yep.
Then there was another concern over crossing the stream, whether to do directional drilling, go underneath the, the bed of it, or hang it from the side of the bridge. That's what the peer review is going to do also. Okay? So, the issues that I want to ask this board is, number one, to continue with this project as planned, and if we do so, are we going to send a letter to the Board of Health asking them, are they going to require every property owner to connect to the water main if a municipal water source is available? Because really, it's under their purview, about portable water. Number two, are we going to send a letter to the, every property owner indicating that, number one, there's going to be a cost associated with this project, that, A, is the town going to pay the $2,000 per connection, which is about what? What'd be, what about?
$1,000.
$100,000? Okay? Are, or is the, we're going to require the property owner to pay it? Number three, are we going to go back to town meeting to get a potential supplemental appropriation from town meeting, or borrowing authority? Or are we planning and going to do a portion of this project as a betterment to the properties that will receive the benefit of municipal water? Just some thoughts for the board to consider.
In the first part, we're only talking businesses, there's no residents involved from South Hadley Line to 55 West Street, correct? There's only businesses we're talking about.
The only other business may require is maybe Granby Motel.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying, for the South Hadley Line.
For a fire line, remember, we just mentioned these two.
Right, and they might have to do a fire line, yes.
Now, the problem becomes is, when CVS was built, did you require them to have a cistern?
I wasn't there, then.
You weren't there? Hmm? So, they invested all this money in a cistern, and now we're going to tell them they have to abandon that and connect to a municipal water supply? Think we may have some pushback from them.
The cisterns also, they can have both, because that's to provide if they don't have water into the building.
They're going to be required to possibly have a water line, a fire line in there, which is to take place of the cistern.
Well, some, some buildings have both, because if the water, something happens to the wire line, where a fire truck can come in and hook up to their, start pumping water into their, their line.
No, well, a fire hydrant's along 202, the length of this, but...
But, but, what I mean, they can hook up and then hook up into it, because something got broke in between, where the, the, what's the word I'm looking for? Can't even think of it now, the sprinkler system wouldn't work, because of the water going into it, whatever happened, didn't work, and they can hook up a fire hydrant to the cistern to push the water through the sprinkler system.
I'm just saying, there's potential issues. There's potential pushback.
Right.
Well, also, let's look at it, we're talking from the South Hadley Line to 55 West State Street, that doesn't involve CVS at all.
But, we were talking about still extending the line to... Pleasant Street, as part of this project.
As part of this project, but we, to get water, South Hadley District One says they could only do Phase One or Phase, in Phase Two.
However... When, during our discussion, Jay?
Yep.
While Mass DOT is only going to a certain spot along 202, we talked about for them to do their modeling up through Amher Street. Because that's where this Phase One was going, was to Amher Street.
You are correct.
And our thought patterns were, at one point, was to continue the water line, even though Mass DOT is only going to Point A, we continue that line up through Amher Street. And we only have to do is patch, we don't really have to put down a, a complete repaving of all of 202, it would just be along the trench line. Okay?
Well, we were talking about putting it under the sidewalks area, where they were doing, because in five years, the temporary easement that Mass DOT is getting from all the property owners, will, the easement will revert back to the town, and if the water pipes are under the sidewalk, then we don't have to ask Mass DOT if we have to do a repair, because it would belong to the town easement then, correct?
That was a thought pattern at one point.
After five years, if we have to do any repairs, we can do it without permission.
If they go under the sidewalk, and the easement revert to the town, then we could do it, the repair, without Mass DOT's permission, because we wouldn't be touching anything of theirs.
Does that seem to be a problem to get permission to Mass DOT to...
Well, I get that five-year rule, that's why we, that five-year rule...
But, that's not our problem, because it's going to be South Hadley District One's pipe.
That's right.
It's not our pipe. Because as part of it is, it becomes, even though we're installing it, it becomes South Hadley Fire District, or Fire, Water District One's property.
Right.
It's not our property.
So, let South Hadley worry about that.
Yes, that won't be our concern.
It's their, their problem for maintenance. Right.
It doesn't, because it's up to them what they feel is the best for them, because they're responsible for the...
Yeah, but see, the thing of it is, is South Hadley is coming in when, like Chris said, they want this, they want this, then they're changing to the drawings, which is Chapel, look at, we don't know what possible changes, because they're only addressing 55 West Street to the South Hadley Line right now, they're not addressing from 56 West Street to Amher Street, we don't know what South Hadley might come up with changes, we don't know. True statement?
We don't know what it will run into, to be honest with you.
Right, we don't know, but we don't know, even from our existing design, what South Hadley say, well, no, we don't want that, we want this.
Well, we asked them.
We did.
To look at their model.
Right.
Bringing us to Amher Street. So that we could include all the quote-unquote "business district."
Right.
From five corners to the South Hadley Town Line. That's what we were looking, trying to attempt to do. We're not going to talk about going up to Morgan Street, we're not going to talk about going the other way on Pleasant Street, because, to be honest with you, South Hadley District One said they don't think they can handle that.
Did that come up in the meeting?
Well, they said, they said they could probably handle Phase One and Phase Two, but they couldn't do Phase Three.
Well, I'm talking about the Amher Street, did that come up in the meeting?
We did talk about that, because when Ty &amp; Bond is going to perform, basically take their old modeling out for South Hadley District One to see how far they could go, they were running it to Amher Street, because that's what I asked them to do, not just run it to High Street or 54 Plut, High Street or, or 54 West State Street, go the distance that we were talking about.
So, no, it costs the complete project.
Okay.
The water would stay a portion.
And then based upon, when we get the new revised figures, we could figure out a per-foot cost of, from South Hadley Line to 55 West State Street, and then we could possibly project the total amount of footage from South Hadley Line to Amher Street, correct?
But, the problem is, is like I said, this board has to make a decision, are we going to continue forward, knowing that the potential cost could skyrocket?
Well, here's the choice of the board, if we don't do from South Hadley Line to 55 West State Street, the five-year rule is going to kick in, and the project is dead. If we do from South Hadley Line to 55 West State Street with the current proposal, the five corners area doesn't come in effect until 2023, so we don't have to worry about any of that until 2023. So, if we don't do the first segment, which will happen next spring... So if we don't do the first segment, which will happen next spring, and there will be no water from South Hadley, period, if we don't do the project at far.
Right, but it also needs to be, it's gotta be...
The cost needs to be feasible to the town. I mean, you can't, we can't go into something where we're expecting that the cost, you know, $2 and some odd cents a foot, or dollars a foot, and then that turns into $4 a foot.
But also, within it, the bid will go out on 14 September of 2019, and if we're on there with an addendum to their contract, then they got about 220 days, I've been told, before they'll make their decision. At the 220-day time, our town has a choice, in or out.
So we can pull back?
We don't have to go forward. We don't have to go forward.
And that should give us enough time to...
That should give us enough time.
Figure out our financials.
That's right. That's what I'm figuring, because it's either, you can't do anything if you don't make the first leg, but that's gonna be from South Hadley Line to 55 West State Street?
Which one's 55?
Ah, it's about Little Italy.
Little Italy?
I think, I think they have 55 or 53 or something like that. Oh, I know, the package store is 60, I know that one. I know, I know the address of the package stores.
Probably gonna be to about, uh...
Jeff Skelski's.
Where Sean Limerol has all his stuff.
Has all of his equipment?
Yeah.
Okay. Because when I saw the map, they still had it listed as being owned by Jeff Skelski, and he did rent it out, lease it out, whatever you wanna call it.
Jeff owns the back piece, but the front...
No, they showed the front, too.
Right, but I'm just saying, the front one is leased by Sean, but the back one is unoccupied at this point.
Okay, that's, I'm just trying to get the station...
Yep.
So, the question becomes, Glenn, I know the planning board is planning a special town meeting for the fall.
Yes.
Is this board gonna include an article for additional funding for this water line?
Well, we don't know what additional funding would be.
But the issue's gonna be, we don't do it, it's gonna be hard, because 220 days isn't a lot of time.
Well, we don't even know if additional funding is gonna be required, and if it is, how much, we don't know, until we get...
I'm playing, trying to play cautious.
I'm trying to play...
To be honest with you, I really am trying to play cautious. There's a lot of things that have to occur.
Right.
Okay? Within that quote-unquote "seven-month" period of time.
So, what were they, they expect the peer review to be back, so is Chapel and Ty and Bond can get together?
I haven't got a cost from Ty and Bond yet. That's one figure I didn't get. Are we gonna borrow against our initial 1.2 million to pay for those costs? Are we gonna try and go for an additional appropriation to cover additional consulting, engineering costs? What are we gonna do?
Well, I look at the 1.2 million that's been authorized. I think that's part of this whole thing. And if we have to go back for additional money because of what comes through the peer review, and I'm kinda curious, too, why we have one saying one thing, one saying the other thing, why aren't we going up to a third party for a peer review?
Well, they did, they did state that if we use Ty and Bond to do the peer review, it would be a lot less expensive, because they already have the model from South Hadley.
So, why are we doing, I guess, why are we having Ty and Bond do the peer review when they've already done it for South Hadley?
Well, they wanna do it on Granby's property.
They wanna review Mr...
Mr... Ms. Sears.
Mr. Lincoln's drawings, because what he had given to Mr. Sears did not include the individual connections for each of the properties, did not include the fire hydrants they're gonna require every...
And that's because we weren't required, we didn't know they were required at the trial.
We told Chapel Engineering that we wanted a stub on every property, and we wanted a fire hydrant every 300 feet.
Okay.
150 feet?
No, it was every 300 feet, because that way they only have to use 150-foot of holes to go either way. But the fire hydrant would be 300 feet between each other, because we talked to the fire chief on that, and he said 300 feet, so that's why we went with that. So the max holes they would have to use, my hydrant would be 150 feet.
Well, I guess my recommendation would be we use from the 1.2 million and go forward, and that way we'll have a better idea of what needs to be done, as far as, is it gonna require more money based on what comes back from Ty and Bond? So, and then we'll have information as far as what's gonna cost, so we can, if need be, we have to go back to the town at that point, we can.
Right, or we could drop out completely if we go back to the town.
We could.
We could.
It's the town's decision.
It's the people's decision. They gave us the permission to go ahead and investigate this, and they give us 1.2 million upfront to fund that project.
Right, is it possible, when a $1 million project turns into a $3 million project? Yeah, we have concerns with it, and if you got a way, is it worth it for the town to spend that money? Going further down that Route 202 is gonna cost probably more money.
Mm-hmm.
Well, we have to find a different water source.
Another different one.
Because District One cannot go beyond Amherst Street, they're saying. They won't be able to give us the pressure, but they require, what, 20 pounds of pressure minimum in the pipe?
What other water sources do we have available?
Well, it's coming down, um...
The other one.
What, E Street?
E Street.
E Street?
That's South Hadley District One.
That's their pipe coming from MWRA. But what they're saying is, is...
When they do their quote-unquote hydrological study or modeling of it, that to maintain a 20-pound pressure, they don't think they can go beyond Amherst Street. They're willing to make the loop down to Morgan, but after that, they're saying they don't have capacity.
That's right. They have a certain amount of gallons that they're allowed from the MWRA, and they're authorizing us 100,000 gallons of water per day.
If we can't go past Amherst Street, there's no way we can get the water past Amherst Street, what is the reason to do it at this point, spend the money?
We would have to know the MWRA.
That's why this board has to make a decision, Glenn, at some point, is that what we had originally planned is turning out to be a half-truth, for lack of a better word.
I mean, where I am, if we don't have any feasible information that states that we can go past Amherst Street with this, then I have concerns of just running that pipe up to Amherst Street, that what it's costing the town to do that, and how much does that can actually benefit the town?
Right, how much of a payback to the business section is that going to give the town, what is, how many years of payback for our investment?
There's very few vacant lots along this road.
Right. They all have water already, and you have to come back and tell them that it's costing, if it goes that way, it's gonna cost them $2,000 to hook up to it, and now you're gonna pay a water bill.
Yep.
They do the same thing with Seward. They gotta pay the hookups to the sewer.
Well, but, yeah, it's the same thing, whereas now they're not, they pay, they have their pumps and they pay for it.
But the other caveat is, everybody is required to connect.
But that's what I'm going back to.
They don't have an option whether to or not to connect. They have to connect.
Right, so that's what I'm saying. What is the benefit at that point, if we cannot go any further than past, not even the Amherst Street, past 55 West State Street, right?
They said we're modeling up to Amherst Street.
They're modeling to Amherst Street, but the first section of DOT ends at 55 West State Street for the next year of 2020. So you can figure from 56 West State Street to Amherst Street, that'll be the 2023 project of Five Corners.
Right, so what I'm saying, so what gets us up to 55 West State Street, and what gets us the next, you know, couple thousand feet, what could that cost us three, two years from now, three years from now? And what does that cost us at that point? Now we say, well, gee, it's not worth it to bring that pipe if we can't, I guess what I'm saying, if we can't go any further than that point, then I don't, I struggle with spending over a million dollars, at least over a million dollars, to see what we can do, because the rest, I mean, the whole purpose that they'd be finding behind this was to benefit the entire town, or somehow move it up 202.
Could MWRA get us water from one end of town to the other, that 202 span?
If we filed an application with MWRA and got it approved, they could increase the water volume. The question is, what route would the pipes take?
But conceivably, could we get water from South Hadley to Belcham, up the 202 corridor?
Going through South Hadley District One, I wouldn't advise that, for the simple reason there's no payback. See, South Hadley District One, we're paying the freight on everything.
Right.
And they're collecting all the money for the water from the people.
Right.
So the people got no reimbursement coming back.
Well, they're providing us a service. I mean, they're providing us a service. We pay for service, I get that part.
Yeah.
To answer your question, Jen, the easiest way for us to be able to supply water along 202 would be to build a water tank on Dufrane Park. That's the highest point in the town of Granby.
Okay.
And then fill that tank with water from the Quabit through MWRA, and then use gravity to feed it to the rest of the town. That's, that's to answer your question.
Okay.
Basically, the same thing that South Hadley has.
No, because South Hadley would have to pump it uphill.
No, 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 that's what South Hadley does, they have a big holding tank.
Correct.
I guess my question is, would it be more cost-effective to go straight through MWRA?
The problem we're gonna have...
If we're running into...
Is the studies that MWRA is gonna require us to do.
Right.
Secondly, is the fee to join, because we have to pay the cost of all the improvements and all construction of all their stuff, which could run a $600,000 bill very easily.
Is there any decisions that need to be made between now and the town meeting that we have? Because to me, this is a lot of different information that's coming forward now that wasn't presented to the residents of Granby.
And that's why I'm talking to this board now, okay? These are things that came out at a subsequent meeting that weren't brought out at the initial meeting. Do you want to go forward with the peer review? Do we wanna rely on Ty and Bond's numbers, or do we rely on Chapel or Dave's numbers? I don't know. I don't know what to tell you, Glenn.
I understand, I'm asking you to tell me. What I'm asking is that, so if we go to November, the town meeting, at that point, the town says, yes, I like to, we like to continue to move...
Can't go, can't go to November. The decision has to be made within the next two weeks to be an addendum to the foot?
No.
We have to make sure that Mass DOT is willing to put us on as an addendum, based upon your conversation and Keith Lincoln's conversation with Mass Highway District Two Engineer, I know, that's Savici or whatever, who you met with.
Doug White.
Okay? Is Mass DOT gonna send another letter to us that says, oh, by the way, ignore the letter of July 12th, here's your letter of August whatever, saying, yeah, you now can be an addendum on our...
Doug White is supposed to send a draft letter to me.
So, at the town, if we have, at the town meeting in November.
Yep.
And the town says, yes, we'd like to continue with this, do we have enough time to do the certain things that we need to do to make this happen? Because like, okay, so then, I would say that, I might, I would say bring it back to the town at the town meeting, because there's a lot of different variables that are in place now that the town did not know about at that time.
Okay, well, my first question to you is this, we have time to decide, are we gonna continue if it's a $3 million project, if it's whatever, okay? The issue I'm asking is, we have to spend money on a peer review. Are we gonna borrow against that 1.2 million to pay for the peer review?
I would say yes, that's what was given to our authority.
Do we have authority to allow the treasurer to borrow whatever the, whatever the additional cost for engineering studies is for this project?
Well, is that also, I guess, is that part of what was approved for at town meeting? Because it's just...
I'm just asking the question, because if we're only gonna borrow, say, 100,000 of it, we don't have to go through a quote-unquote "bonding" process.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would do a short-term note, anticipation note, so we don't go heavy bond with those. The only problem that we might have is, it might reduce the total amortization period I can do, let's say it takes two years to do this mess, it would shorten our total amount that we could borrow or bond for. That'd have to work out with Mr. Nambon. But, you know, 100,000, 200,000 dollars would be a bond anticipation. If I were to borrow it within the next few months, it would be payable in one year, so it wouldn't affect fiscal year 20.
So, we wanna move forward to get all our numbers together.
We need the correct numbers, and we also, if we wanna keep going, we have to do to 55 West State Street, because if you don't do 55 West Street, just kill the whole thing now.
Well, and then, but that's, when we go to that meeting in November...
55 West State Street, it'll be done, unless we kill it then, and then we can kill it at the, um...
The town meeting will make that determination.
Right.
But I want, I want the residents, I know at that time, too, what is our feasible resolution to continue from that point?
Oh, I agree entirely.
Because if we don't, then that's, that's a, that's a huge impact, because when the town heard it's the last town meeting, this was going from here to the South Hadley Town Line for a great deal.
1.2 million, that's, that's what we calculated?
No, they were, I think they had an impression that it was going up to Amherst Street, past Amherst Street, down 202. This was only Phase One of the whole thing.
Well, we'd like to keep going that way, yeah.
But that's what we, that's what the town agreed to.
If it's not, if it's not real and it can't happen, that's something the town needs to know. Or if it's real and it can't happen, you know what? It could cost us this, not this anymore.
That's what I'm bringing into this board.
We have additional information that sort of contradicts what was presented to town meeting.
So where I am with it, I, you know, I recommend what Mr. Nally's saying as far as obtaining the funding for that.
I do a $50,000 ban at this point, to be honest with you. I can't see us going higher than that, if it's gonna be more than that to do additional.
For the peer review, to give us enough money, enough information to bring it back to residents of Granby, to say, this is where we are now, information has changed, this is what we know now, do you wish to continue, or do you not wish to continue with the project?
And that is feasible to do.
Right, and that'll get us in just before the 220 days to award the contract.
Then we can opt right out or stay in it, that would be our choice.
Okay, but, but my biggest concern, I want a letter from Mass DOT that says, yeah, you're now back in the, you're now back in the running.
You know, our O Ts cross, eyes dotted, and make sure we have everything, that needs to be there, so we're protecting ourselves.
Yes, protecting residents.
Yes, I am a resident, ourselves.
Everybody.
I just wanted to let the board know.
Okay, because there is some stuff that came through that is disconcerting at this point in time.
And I agree 100%.
And I say, if we continue using, going through South Hadley, South Hadley will determine all the decisions on configuration and construction.
Which is understood, because South Hadley's gonna own the pipes. They're responsible for those pipes and all that that goes along with it, so...
I'm just saying that.
Well, we knew that going, we went and asked them for water, we knew that going forward.
Okay, just wanna make sure everybody understands that we will not own it, they will, we will pay for it, but they will own it, and they will maintain it.
So where's our agreement that they can't shut it off?
Well, if I was a user, and they want to shut my water off, I think there'd be some lawsuits against them.
Well, I would hope so, but I would hate for that to...
Well, I think, based on the municipality, the certain laws they have to follow, I don't think I could just turn someone's water off.
Well, I meant not, not saying, okay, you know what, you can't have water, but just saying, something's happened, we can't accommodate.
We cannot exceed 100,000 gallons of water per day.
There's gonna be a contract with the town of Granby and the town of South Hadley versus what we get.
I'm just afraid that if we exceed that...
We cannot exceed that.
I know we can't, well, I do a lot of things that I can't do. It happens sometimes.
Well, I'm just saying, that's all the water they've allocated to us.
Right.
So, Chris, do you need a motion from this board to proceed with...
I would just like, even just a consensus vote from the board.
I'm fine with it.
I'm fine with that.
With recommending it from Mr. Nally, what he thinks, what he thinks is the proper way to go.
So am I.
Good. So, with yourself, obviously, Chris, but...
No, I, my, my opinion is, is basically go $50,000.
Yep.
That should cover whatever costs we need, and we go from there.
Yep. And then we'll get the cost updated through two different sources. And we'll see what the actual course between the two sources are, and see if they're the same or not. And then, we'll just go from there, and we'll be in line to stay on the addendum for the first phase of Mass DOT. And if it doesn't work out, like Chris says, at the 220-day mark, we have a choice of staying in or just opting out and say, have a nice day. At minimal cost.
Steve Ross said.
Yes, sir.
On the next slide, we have the firm appointments.
Yeah.
We have a email from Mr. Joyce, as Chair of the Energy Committee, requesting that Joseph Shalou be appointed as an alternate member of the Energy Committee, effective immediately.
Yep. We can use all the help we can get. And if anybody else wants to volunteer that's watching G-Cam, we'll take another alternate.
We also have another appointment, Linda Fish to the Charter Day Committee. She was a member up through June 30th. However, she's, her name seemed to have been overlooked on the reappointment, so we are asking that Ms. Fish be reappointed to the Charter Days, seeing how she's still performing the treasurer functions for the Charter Day Committee. So, I think it would be nice to put her on there.
Those are the two.
All right, so, Joseph Shalou is an alternate?
Mm-hmm. Anybody out there on G-Cam, and we can use some more help? Keep trying, right, Lil?
Okay. So, I will make the motion to approve Joseph Shalou as an alternate to the Energy Committee and Linda Fish as a member of the Charter Day Committee.
Just one question regards that, what is that, the Energy Committee, where does that bring your committee up to now?
Six.
Six members? Two alternates?
No.
One alternate?
One alternate. He'd be the only alternate. We don't have an alternate right now.
Okay, okay. I'll, I'll second Jen's motion.
Any further discussion on the appointments that were just affirmed? Hearing no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous on the appointments? And now we got to rescind an appointment.
Okay, first off, Dave Trumke declined the appointment as constable for the town of Granby for fiscal year 20. As he said to me, he's at the age now where he just wants to take it easy. So, he was grateful that the board wanted to appoint him, however, he felt it's time to hang up his spurs. Plus, I think the fact, I think his wife's gonna be retiring very soon, too, so I think he'll want to have opportunity to spend more time with her. The one that I'm really rescinding is Anthony Liberto as a auxiliary police officer. The letter that we sent to him came back as undeliverable with his address of record. When the police department was canceled, Lieutenant O'Grady indicated that he had resigned from the police department effective 7/20/19. So, I think we need to rescind that appointment, because I believe he is becoming a police officer, Chicopee or Ludlow? Hadley. Hadley.
Hadley.
So...
Do you have to rescind the employment even if he's aye in all positions?
I would rescind it, just to play it safe, because we never received a resignation letter, did we?
Do we want to rescind from the park police, too? Is he on there?
Whatever. It's just, any rescission of anything that he's been put on.
Anything he's on, okay.
Yes.
Anything he's on is rescinded.
What was his last name?
Liberto. L-I-B-E-R-T-O.
All right. So, I will make the motion to rescind the appointments of Dave Trumke, who declined the constable appointment, and Anthony Liberto from all GPD.
I'll second Jen's motion.
Any further discussion on the rescission of the appointments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous?
Hey, Chris, is a certain number of constables that we have to have in town?
No.
No?
We just, we just try and get enough so that when people, most of them are retired people, so we have enough to call in or call on as people are busy with their own private lives as retirees.
Okay, I know there's like a certain number we have to, to perform certain duties on.
Nope. And usually, our backup is Ms. Leonard as the constable.
The CEO.
The next item is, is we do not have a bulky waste day or fall waste, or waste days scheduled? Do you want me to get ahold of Dave DeRosa and try and arrange some days and then get back to the board?
Yes.
Do you also want us to look at next spring and do a mall for fiscal year 20?
Fiscal year 20.
I think so, just start scheduling them now, so people can...
Just schedule now, and get them away from holiday weekends.
Yeah.
No, we're gonna do it every holiday weekend.
That doesn't go over a lot.
No, it doesn't. So, that's why I'm saying, make sure we pick days that are not holiday weekends.
Next, I want to do one thing that isn't on the agenda. At the last board meeting, the board had voted that we were gonna send a letter to the planning board regarding the new westover noise exposure map, and to see if, in relation to this new map, if the planning board would consider making changes to, A, the zoning maps and bylaws, to see if, with this new map, we could allow either industrial or commercial uses in that area. Am I correct?
Right. The planning board should have all the latest and greatest information.
I'm sorry.
Because you guys have all the information from the old maps, and you need to know what the new maps are. So, that's all we're doing, is passing off the information. That's all it is.
The board can either approve or disapprove the letter.
Oh, I didn't read the letter. Sounds good.
Yeah, because all, all we're doing is passing that, a package...
Onto them.
Onto them, which is right there. I should check my email. I checked my file and see where I put that. Oh, you did?
You did. I'm gonna make sure I have it. Not that I don't trust you.
I trust you.
Shh. I don't trust my email.
I don't know. For some reason, in here tonight, I'm getting send and receivers. So, I have no idea.
I don't have it, Kathy.
I sent it before the meeting started.
Yeah.
I wonder if it was too big? If not, I'll live without it.
No, we can always get a stick for her, but if she said, if she emailed it to me before, then, if it made it through the email server before, then it should make it yet.
If it's her service, it may be too big for her service.
Yeah, maybe too big to come in through mine over Wi-Fi or...
You have Comcast?
Well, I'm on AT&amp;T data right now.
Oh, okay.
It might not like it.
Right. Because I know, like Brian Hofchild, he has, his company is a very small one, so I have to break it all up when I send him stuff.
All right.
Is there a motion?
I'll wait for Jen.
Oh, sorry.
Do you have any comments on the letter?
I don't.
Okay.
I make a motion that we approve the letter and sign.
I'll second Jen's motion.
Any more discussion on passing the information off to the planning board? Hearing no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Okay. And that is two ayes and one abstention, with the abstention being Mr. Sexton. Now, if we get any more information, pass it on.
Absolutely.
That's right. That's what I'm saying.
There you go, Jen.
That's all we're trying to do.
Do you want me to go through my items before you present yours, and Jay, you present yours?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, we have Dufresne and Brown Ellison Rentals. We have Dufresne Park on August 17th for a picnic. Number of people, 49, arriving 12:00 p.m., departing 6:00 p.m. No liquor authorized. We have on, between August 19th and October 31st, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Granby Athletic Association Soccer, the soccer field's next to the playscape. Maximum number of people is 100. Liquor authorized is no. Then we have on September 8th, 2019, from 1:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. We have a baby shower at the Pavilion Number One on the Taylor Street near the Pond Road. It's a number of people, 45. Liquor authorized is no. Then we have Brown Ellison, between August 19th and November 17th, Monday through Friday, 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Saturday, 8:30 to, 8:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Back of the Brown Ellison, large soccer field, front area, small soccer field. Maximum number of people is 100. Liquor authorized is no. And that's it for Dufresne Rentals. The other topic I want to talk to the board about is the employee contracts. The board had me send letters to the various contracted employees. Do you want me to start negotiating proposed contracts we brought forward to the board for approval? Or does the board want to actively participate with every employee in contract negotiations? Or how do you wish to proceed?
If I have time, I'd like to participate.
I don't need to participate in the contracts. I think that's fine between you as the department heads that will, the...
Can we legally go into executive session and discuss those before we present them out here?
No.
Well, you would go into, for contract negotiations.
That's what I'm saying.
Yes.
I'm saying, discuss them.
You would have, you can have executive session negotiations with each individual employee, but then, the final contract has to be voted on in public session.
Right. So, what I'm trying to say is, if we allow you to do the negotiations, then we can sit down in executive session with you and review what you do.
No.
Okay, that's why I'm asking.
What I would do is, I would put together a draft contract. It would be sent to the board of members prior to the meeting for them to review the proposed changes. You would go into executive session that night to talk about the proposed contract only. Instead of going through line of item one, item two, item three, item four, I will have done most of that, highlighted the potential changes. Get it to the board, and then the board would meet with the department head or other contract employee and hammer out a final contract, if need be, or accept what the two of us had already negotiated.
My recommendation is, you as the town administrator can do that. I don't need to be part of a negotiation, speak for myself, part of the negotiation process for the contract, so you know what the contracts state. You've, you've done it many times, Chris. So, I'm fine with that.
Long as I can review what is today and what's to be changed, I got no problem with Mr. Martin doing it. And long as I have time to review it before we have our meeting. Should we set a suspense on how long that we need to review it? Because I, we don't want to do it the last day, same day, no.
I don't want to do that. I'd like it much.
Two weeks, one meeting?
One meeting.
One meeting before. So, long as we have them two weeks before we're proposing it?
How many contracts are you talking about, in reviewing each one at each meeting?
We will, no.
No.
I would, if I could, I would like to get everybody together. Get the highway, fire chief, police chief, lieutenant, council and agent director. I think there's one other one. I can't remember off the top of my head what we sent out. I think we sent out like seven letters.
Now, the new hires, they're good until the next period, right? Because I know you traditionally make all the contracts, or do all the same date, 30 June of every year. I know we just hired a new facility supervisor.
I would still make it...
A shorter period, in three years, I would turn around and do.
Okay.
I, I like to have them all end the same year, instead of me trying to remember which ones are... You just remember that, June 30th of this certain year, that everybody's contract is...
I guess, and now that it would happen. But there's always a possibility that each department head just, he can't come to a agreement on the contract, and they all leave.
Yes, they could.
That could potentially happen, yes.
So, right, so this, how does that, is that dangerous for the town?
Well, the same danger you could say for them is if the town, if they're, if the town doesn't want to renew their contract.
No, I'm just going back to having all the, all the contracts expire at the same time. Is it...
Well, the way the contract...
More reasonable, here, Jay, please. Is it more reasonable to have them staggered? Staggered different times, so you're not...
Decimating an entire department?
I think the way Mr. Martin has it, so they all expire like on 30 June, such, such an ear, year, but then they also read, or until negotiated on out. So, currently, like, we're in negotiation with the union contract of the fire department, which is over, but the old contract still continues. It's still in effect. So, I don't see an issue with it. If you guys do, well, because we're covered.
I'm just asking, is it, you know, is that, not that it would happen...
For me, it's easier for me to try and remember. I'm gonna be honest with you. To try and remember which ones expire when, and it, well, it runs into some problems for me.
It's the same thing when we appoint people. We appoint them all the same time, every single year, so we don't have to figure, we gotta do this one this month, this one that month. Same thing, right, Chris?
But I'll do respect, Chris, to...
And I understand what you're saying.
You, you may not be here four or five years from now.
Why, am I going so far?
No, but I'm saying, you may just say, hey, I'm done, I'm retiring. So, that's, I'm just, you know, but whatever, I, whatever's, whatever's...
Personally, for me, it's eas, for, for me, it's easier doing it that way.
Yeah.
Okay, because I know one fell swoop, yes?
Not what I wanted. Nothing.
Oh, okay. If the board wants me to do, stagger them, I'll stagger them. I don't have a problem with that. It's up to the board to guide me on that, if that's what they say. If you'd rather do it a different way, you're not gonna hurt my feelings. It's just that, remember that I may not remember that one expires two years, or one expires three years, or one expires five years, or whatever from now.
You gotta give people the proper notice and everything like that.
That's all. That's all. It's just...
I got a lot of shades in here. Remember things.
Oh, okay. Don't forget, I'm getting older. The memory is the first thing to go. The other thing I want to, well, actually, there's two more things I want to talk about. The school department's accounts payable person has a health issue. She is out of work for a while. Last week, I assisted the school in doing their accounts payable warrants, just so this board knows. I made the offer. They accepted. I don't know where it's gonna go from here. I have heard rumors that they are trying to set it up where I'll be able to log into their machine remotely and be able to enter their bills. However, I am not charging the town for the amount of time that I've taken to do that, but I believe I should be able to charge the school department for whatever hours I devote to them. I just want to let this board know that, okay? Because otherwise, I can't, I'm not gonna do it for free. We don't know how long that individual's gonna be out. I don't know how long that person's gonna be out. And I cannot make this a long-term thing, or a permanent thing, until I decide to walk out the door. Just so the board knows.
So, you are thinking about retirement?
Seven years. Actually, seven years, if my health holds out. You've got a seven-year notice. You've got a seven-year notice. I will be age 70 in seven years, and I think that's the time to hang up my spurs.
Who wants to work till they're 70?
Me.
You and I are retiring at the same time, Chris.
Me. No, honestly, me. No, honestly, me.
Forty-five.
Honestly, no. Because I like the job. I like the job. Yeah, it has stress, but I do like the job, to be honest with you.
Someone once told me, if you like what you're doing, is it really work?
Yep. Yep. So, so, but I'm just letting this board know that I will be doing, hopefully, work continually for the school, okay?
So, let me ask you now, is do, does there need to be a contract between you and the school committee? Or because it should be some, there should be a set cost. I mean, it's maybe between you and them, but...
It's going to be a per dollar, or per hour dollar figure that I would offer to have them, for me to do the work for them, okay?
Off this outside your regular duties.
Well, I'm just letting, well, I just want to let the board know.
Oh, yeah.
Because everything gets out there on Facebook, and it gets twisted, and it gets this, it gets that. I'm meeting it upfront, just so the board knows.
Fair enough.
Okay?
If you have expertise in certain areas, and if they wish to hire you, contract you out, that's their choice.
Okay, but...
We should also let them know the current system they have to pay bills over there. Only the person that's unfortunately out on health issues, and Mr. Martin knows how to use. I'm just being honest and upfront.
The only question in regards to, is there a conflict of interest?
No.
Based on it's another, it's a...
No, because it's a town department. It's a town department.
Okay, that's why I want to make sure that you know it's...
To be honest with you, Glenn, they may have a database in their school. It's the town accountant's books that are audited by the auditors. What they put in their system gets transferred over to the town side for auditing purposes. I don't see a conflict. I just see it as someone being able to assist in making sure that the town's books remain legit.
Yeah, I don't, but...
I understand where you're coming from.
We make a call just so we know that there's not, and I don't think there is.
Because they're, they're not like a separate district, they're a town department.
Mm-hmm. You're the town administrator.
Yeah, okay.
And I'm the town accountant.
So, but you were saying to me now, since that information is given to you, and you're giving yourself that information, it's going to be correct?
Yes. As long as the information given to me is correct. It will be entered correctly, just like miss, the individual was entering it, but that's all.
Chris, honestly...
I'm, I'm trying to help the school in a time of need, and that's all I'm trying to do.
And that's the point I want to get to, is to say thank you. Because that, that does, yeah, I mean, to me, that's, you as a, as a town employee, but the town administrator is really stepping up. That's, that shows you your true concern for the town. Thank you.
Thank you. But I'm just saying is, I just want to let this board know, so when you start hearing rumors, yes, it is true.
It's not a rumor, it's factual.
Yes.
It's factual. I'm just one of the states, so everybody knows.
Only two people in this town know that program, and that's the person that's ill, and Chris. And the school should have had somebody in backup, just like if we have special programs in the town, we should have other people backing up.
But that's not our problem, that's theirs.
That's theirs. I'm just saying for our side. That's why we have Ms. Leonard learning.
This board needs to know that, yes, I have been showing someone how to do stuff, okay?
Yep.
It's Kathy.
Yep.
Kathy Leonard, okay?
How dare you.
She's going to be sitting there someplace.
I know, right?
But the issue is, is, is that I was told, if I go out and get hit by a bus, or decide to have a stroke, or decide to have a heart attack, or whatever...
Why would you decide that?
Well, you never know. The body does, does strange things at times, that at least, that, right now, I'm doing payroll, so make sure at least everybody gets paid. That's the biggest concern on my part. Bills, you can limp along on bills. But payroll, payroll needs, needs to be done, pure and simple.
People have to pay their own bills.
Okay?
And I think that the school committee reaches out to you to do that, I think that's, you know, it shows their trust in you. And again, thank you for doing what you're doing, but most important, do, make sure you take care of yourself, you know?
I do.
But also, we should also understand...
I'm going to be adding, adding, adding more to yourself, so I'll just...
Sleep is overrated.
Sleep when you're dead.
Yeah, permanently, right? On the town clerk, Kathy Kelly Regan, we have a backup on her, a part-time town clerk.
She appoints an assistant town clerk on her own.
Right.
The only one who we, actually, the only one who we really don't have a backup to is Dave DeRosa.
Dave DeRosa. We should consider that for next year, really, really.
That is a fight with Dave DeRosa.
Well, we will make the fight, because I don't want to unfortunately hear something happens to Dave DeRosa, and then nobody else is able to run the department. We should look at a lead person for next year in the highway department to pick it up in case Mr. DeRosa unfortunately has an illness or something, because we don't have no backup there.
We are all getting older.
That's right.
So...
It doesn't make a difference, still no backup.
So, then the other thing I want to bring up while the fire chief is here, the board had received an email from the superintendent of schools regarding an incident that occurred up there. Glenn and myself, Glenn is the liaison, and myself met with the chief to talk about it. He provided a letter from the two firefighters who were on scene with him. He gave his version of the events, and the people on our side said that, number one, he did not yell at anybody. He was stern, but yet didn't yell, okay? I think what happened is, is when the superintendent called him to go, to go over the incident, the two, him and the fire chief and the superintendent, got heated, because she was demanding that they get a key to that box, even though they were shutting the alarm off illegally. Nobody has the right to shut the alarm off except the fire department, and that's straight from the state fire marshal's office, correct?
It's actually state law.
State law.
Give me a second, I just want to pull that email up really quick. No, she didn't send it to that email, she's been to... Oh, you have a copy of it?
That's my copy.
Because I have my copy, so I'm good. But it's easier to read here than it is on a small little screen.
Yeah, I was going to open it up mine for you, but you got that.
And I don't know if you, the board wants to hear from Chief Mitchell regarding his version of the events, but I believe, Glenn, that you felt that the fire chief's explanation was sufficient, and that he was well within his rights to be upset that people were shutting a fire alarm off without permission.
Yes, that's correct.
I do not want to pit departments against each other. That is not what I'm asked, that's not what I'm attempting to do here. I'm looking at Officer Gillies' statement to Chief Wishart, and it says that Chief Mitchell, Chief Mitchell's voice was raised, condescending towards both Principal Stephen Sullivan and John Sullivan. I do understand the severity of what was done and the incorrectness of what was done. I guess my question is, why are we having, there's three sides to every story. How are we knowing what side is what? Because we have an officer who's telling us one thing, we have a principal that's telling us one thing, we have a fire chief that's telling us one thing, and clearly, from the superintendent's letter, the conversation was not a pleasant conversation, with voices raised and things like that. And I think just in the realm of professionalism, I don't know if I'm comfortable with that. So, yes, I would like to hear what the fire chief has to say.
So, I'm, I'm sorry. So, did, did you get a chance to read my...
No.
Okay.
No, I haven't seen your response either.
Okay, would, would you like me to just give it to you in some, so you don't have to go through the whole thing? Okay, so, on July first, at about ten o'clock, the fire department received a report of an alarm activation at the school.
The high school?
Correct, yes. So, as we were responding, we got a follow-up report that the alarm was activated by dust set off by someone cleaning a room. On my arrival, I noticed that the principal was standing at the door, holding it open. I exited my vehicle, and I kind of took a moment of pause, because I noticed that there was no alarm sounding, there was no strobes activated, and there were people inside the building still. So, I kind of got confused by the fact that we were getting called for an alarm with no indication of an alarm actually activating. As I entered the building, the principal said, it's in room one oh seven, and I, I shut off the alarm. And so, I just, I kind of let that sink in for a second, and I went and looked at the, the room. I sent my lieutenant down to check the alarm panel. When I went in there, I didn't detect any dust, didn't detect any smoke, nothing. As I was exiting, I stopped and I spoke with the principal, and yes, I was very stern. And my concern is this. Mass General Law one forty-eight, which is the Fire Prevention Code for the state of Massachusetts, section twenty-seven A, very specifically reads, "Shut off, disconnect, obstruct, remove, or destruction of fire protection devices, except as herein after, provided no person shall shut off, disconnect, obstruct, remove, or destroy, or cause, or permit to be shut off, disconnect, destruct, remove, destroy, any part of any sprinkler system, water main, hydrant, or other device used for fire protection or carbon monoxide detection, and alarm in any building owned, leased, or occupied by any such person or under his control or supervision, without first procuring a written permit to do so from the head of the fire department or the city or town wherein such building is situated, which permit such head is hereby authorized to issue, subject to such terms and conditions as is, in his judgment, protection against fire and preservation of public safety may require. This section shall not prevent the temporary shutting off or disconnection or partial removal of such system, main hydrant, or other device, for the purpose of making necessary repairs or preventing freezing or other property damage, provided, however, that the head of the department is notified immediately of such action. The head of the fire department shall also be notified when the system, main hydrant, or other device is placed back in service. Violation of this section shall be punished by imprisonment for not more than one year or by a fine of not more than one thousand dollars or both." That's serious to me, okay?
I'm not debating the seriousness of that.
And, and speaking with the principal, okay, we all hold expectations for people. The principal is somebody that we drill with several times a year, and we try to instill it on our kids, that when the alarm goes off, you go out. This is someone who is trained in that and did the complete opposite. Not only did he not evacuate the building, not only did he ensure that the building was evacuated, he shut the alarm off, which is a criminal offense. So, yes, I, I was a little more perturbed than I probably would have been or am when a layperson does it. This is somebody who should have known better. Was I condescending? I'm not going to deny that. I don't necessarily feel I was. I, I was certainly stern. Regardless, I think being a little condescending and, and getting a, a hand slap is far better than getting a criminal charge on your background that's going to follow you around for the rest of your life. The other issue I have is when I asked the principal about the people in the school, he had two separate responses for me. One was, well, we, we knew what it was, so we didn't need to evacuate. Who is he to make that decision that he knows what it is? He's not qualified, he's not a fire protection engineer, he doesn't know what did or didn't cause. He speculated. That's not his job, that's my job. Additionally, when I asked him about the people in the building, his response was, I don't know who's in the building. That's your building, you're the principal, you should know who's in there. I don't care if it's summertime or not. And if you're that concerned about it, then your, your, your response should have been, go and check the building and evacuate. That should have been his response. So, if I was a little condescending, I expected a whole lot more from him. The second piece to that, in speaking to Ms. Stanton, when she called me, the conversation started off heated, because she was demanding something she was not entitled to. I've spoken to the fire marshal's office, I've spoken to code enforcement. She has zero dog in the fight on having those keys. That is not for her to even ask me, but she did. If she'd asked me, maybe we could have worked something out. But every time I tried to explain to her the reasoning for removing the key, which I state in my letter, was because there was no other key available, and we needed one in our lockbox. As we exited the building, I instructed my lieutenant to check the knock box where the keys are stored. Do we have an alarm panel key in there? No, chief, we don't. Go back in, grab the key out of the panel, put it in the box, because that's where it belongs. If we only have one, it's unquestionably staying with us. I tried to explain that to her. Every time I did, she interrupted me. She continually raised her voice. So, in turn, I'm going to raise my voice to try to get to that same level, because there's, there's a lot of times, there's just no talking to her. You know, you try to explain something, she, if she doesn't get the answer she wants, that's concerning to me. I'll take that even further. In the conversation, she decides to threaten me. We're talking about the fire alarm system, and she brings up fire drills. We missed a couple of fire drills this year. Mass state law requires that we do at least four during school year. The only times we ever didn't complete drills was either because we were, had an emergency and we could not respond, because we're tied up, or we did it out of the convenience of not having the kids going outside in snow or rain, okay? And, and she decides to bring up the, well, you know, you didn't do drills this year. What are you trying to do? I feel that's an inappropriate use of her power and authority. She's trying to use something against me for her gain, for something that had nothing to do with what she brought up. I feel that's very inappropriate, okay? I want to additionally point out some other pieces to this, okay? Chief, if you don't mind, if I just stop at this point. I'm going to ask the other board members if they could read all the reports that were given.
Yeah, because I only have...
Before we follow up with the chief.
Yeah.
I sit here and I read all the reports that were given, the statements that were given. So, I feel like I have more additional information that, I don't want to be asking questions that may be answered in some of the statements that were provided. So, that's, this is where I am.
What other statements do we have?
I have, I have Officer, I have Officer Gillies' statement, I have...
Stephen Sullivan's, and the one from Cheryl Stanton, is the only three that I have.
You should have a statement from...
I have Stephen Sullivan's statement, and I have Cheryl's.
Those are the three that I have.
There's also a statement from firefighter paramedic Mike Pelletier.
I haven't seen that.
Okay, also from Lieutenant Tyler Yvonne, from the fire department, as well as the chief's statement and response to it. So, I just say that if we could take the time to read all the information that's given to us before we start to question the chief on it. That would be my recommendation to the board.
Do you want to read them now, or do you want to postpone?
I think we'll postpone.
That's up to the other board members. I've, I've already read them, so...
I'd like to postpone this, so I can read them and compare them.
I'd like to have the letters, so I can read them and postpone it to the next meeting.
Next meeting? I'm okay with that.
Because I think we need all the facts, not just one side. As Jen... As Jen stated, there's three sides to every story. We want to find out which one works.
Chief, my apologies to you. I forgot you off, but I think it's fair to the board to review all the documentation that was provided.
Absolutely.
Do you have those in email form, Chris? Do you have them in email form?
Yeah, we only have one side.
No, these were handed to me.
Okay.
So, what I'll do is scan them and send them out.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. To me, too, I take it.
No. Jen asked. You didn't.
I said, "Please."
Yes. You sit closer to him so you can hit him harder than I did.
No, she's threatening to kick me. That way, people won't see her.
I can get by.
I'll set room.
Yeah, thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief.
Do you want to bring up your thing?
Yeah. Okay, so Lou Barry had asked me to present this to the Select Board. Full disclosure, I'm not sure if some of you know that there is a newly formed Friends of Granby Parks and Recreation, and I do serve on the Board of Directors for that. We have a private citizen who is willing to pay out of his own pocket to do some improvements along some of the Dufrane trails. I was hoping to get a map of where they are so that we could show you because I'm not even totally sure of where they are. It looks like out of pocket, we'd be looking about $3,000 worth of repairs that are not charged to Granby but do benefit Granby. What Lou is looking for, they have a meeting with the Conservation Committee, I believe, the 13th? Am I right in that, Kathy? The 13th? He would like the Select Board to recommend to the Conservation Committee that they definitely take this under consideration in terms of the improvements. It looks like we will be, the plan is to add some drainage to various parts of the trail to make them possible in all weathers. I have been on the trails where some, you're in ankle-deep mud. So, if you're jogging, it's a safety hazard. We've got a lot of bikers on those trails now. Again, it can cause slips, which I would believe would bring liability to the town if someone gets hurt on Dufrane. Chris? We have an injury on the trails? Is that, okay?
There's no signs up there to say, "Use at your own risk."
Doesn't matter.
Signs are signs.
They're going to sue you. You can put every sign up that you want.
But it's limited liability then, the rest of-
Well, we have limited liability anyways because we don't charge to go in the park.
Right, it is "Use at your own risk", but if we have the ability to maintain them, we should be doing that. And I guess on my thing, if we've got someone who's volunteering to maintain them and paid to have them maintained, why would we not take advantage of that?
The only issue that I would have with that is I would want the individual to sign a disclaimer that if the individual is to get hurt, the town is not responsible for the person getting hurt.
The individual himself will not be doing the repairs. He has contracted out with a company that will do the repairs.
The only thing I would recommend, let's interrupt you. Have you done, Jen, I mean-
Yeah, no, interrupt away.
If it, if they send it off to Conservation and they like the idea or they approve it, the gentleman who is wishing to pay for it, I would ask that he donates the money to the town. Then the town hires that company out to do the work because I'm sure there's some concern with liability as far as someone, a private citizen, paying for work that's being done on town property.
Yeah, I'm not sure how that works, which is why I know it would need to go to CONCOM and they would probably have to come back to us for approval on that. I do know that Mr. Delozier, he is, you're familiar with the upgrades that are going on at the dog park. He is part of those. Yeah, so it's the same, it's in the same family. He's just looking to expand his reach of helping to improve because his ex-wife, who had passed away, was a fan of the dog park. He's a fan of the trails.
As long as we don't have anything liable for the town, we work that issue out. I don't have a problem at all. But I can tell you from past experience, if you're there and you slip and fall, it could be liable and I don't want the town to be liable for anything because we don't have control.
We don't have control. And I understand that. Again, I do not know, I do not know what the contract is. I'm just presenting this to the board, asking the board to recommend that CONCOM actually take it under advisement.
I will let the Park Advisory Committee take it from there and then any legal aspects can go to Mr. Martin and if need be, he can go to the town attorney and get it squared away and then just let it go.
Can I just have the Parks Committee directly bring it up to the Conservation? Could put on their agenda?
Yeah, well, as I said, we'll give it to, we'll give it to the Parks Committee. There's no need for us to get involved with it.
It's already part of the Parks Committee. The Parks Committee is going to. But because the Parks Committee is appointed.
Right, so I don't think it comes to us until the money needs to be changed hands. And that's what I recommend, Chris. I don't know if that's the proper way to do it, but I would think the money should be donated to the town to be used as such. Gifted, yeah.
Specific purpose, yes. What I would request of whoever's doing the work is a copy or a form signed saying they have workers' compensation coverage for anybody doing the work and to provide us with a $50,000 liability.
Just like we do anywhere that the town's hiring.
Yeah, yes.
Or people that are going to French.
So, okay.
And they can just give us a rider or a named as a co-insured from their insurance company. Those are the two things I would like to see.
You said 50K?
Yeah, it's only $2,900.
Well, no, I know that, but-
But I'm just saying, and they're going to be out on the trails. They're not going to be near anything big that they could possibly destroy.
No, the only thing, and I'm, again, I am not positive because Ben had not gotten back to me regarding if there was an actual, if it had been mapped out yet. From one section of this, I am guessing it is up by the old spillway, for better, lack of a better term. It's about 3/4 of a mile out. That would be the only structure that could be damaged, but it doesn't hold anything back at this point. So-
If you count the current spill, what you do. Personally? I don't think we even maintain it, to be honest with you.
We don't. The reason that he went out.
But my issue is, is I wouldn't see a problem with that. You know, just give us 50,000 just to, you know.
So, I will go back, I will go back to Lou with this information so when he goes to CONCOM, he will have.
That's my own personal opinion.
Okay.
Just long as town is covered, that's all. What's your professional opinion? That's what I'm concerned about.
Professional? Professional is you have liability and workers' comp, a statement saying they are covered, they have workers' comp coverage.
But that was your personal opinion.
Still personal.
Same thing.
Oh, okay.
Still personal.
Anybody that the town hires out anyways.
Yes.
To do work for the town.
To do work.
Yes.
Yep, okay. Then I recommend too that, obviously, that we get a chance that this does go through. The board takes steps to write a letter and thank the gentleman for this generous donation to the town.
Yeah, we can have the Parks Committee draft it.
Give it to us because they'll be in touch with all the people and know exactly what's done. You too. That's fine.
Okay, that's all I wanted with that. Give you guys a heads up.
Just a couple of things here. We talked about doing the contracts for our employees. We know we're in some negotiations with the unions. We don't have any copies of the school contracts. To me, it doesn't matter if you're an at-will employee, you're a union employee, for what union?
It does make a big difference.
Well, I'm saying when I get to the cost of living every year, we should be looking at across the town, trying to treat everybody pretty much equal is all I'm trying to say. Pay raises, costs of living, and so much. And we can't look at it across the board if we don't have the other contracts.
Right, but well, people's, that's why we have bargaining units just because, and he's a totally example, just because the police department, their union bargains for a 4% raise doesn't mean that teachers' union bargains and should get the same 4% raise.
I agree.
So, I mean, that's why they're bargaining units for them. They represent-
But I would like to know on what is going on in the town so we try to treat everybody close to equal, which you can't. Because the cost of living for one person is going to be the same for the other. That's all I'm saying. If they want to do the bargaining, now, all the other contracts, we have a non-bargaining unit. They're at-will employees.
No, it's not. That's why you have a contract. They're bargaining by their contract. Their contract is saying, "This is what I'd like to be paid." So, that they are bargaining.
But if you go over the highway, how do you classify those individuals, workers? They're at-will employees.
They're not at, union, they're not at-will.
Non-union.
Right.
Anyone who has a contract under, that it can be terminated isn't at-will.
But even-
But still, with a contract, you're not really at-will. Because you have the contract.
But even, even if you are a non-union,
First, they don't work.
Non-union employee, you cannot just fire them willy-nilly. You still have to give just costs. So, they're not really an at-will. They are hired at extra, you know, if you're going to be paid at grade such and such, step such and such, this is what you're going to get for every hour of work.
Or anything like that.
I guess where are you going with this, Jay?
I think everybody should be treated equal. I'm just trying to find out what across the board we're doing for cost of living for all the, everybody.
Okay, I just didn't know what your question was.
That's where I'm trying to go with it. I understand-
That's why we have bargaining units and the bargaining units represent that particular bargaining people where-
As a Select Board, we should be involved in all the bargaining unit negotiations.
We were when it came up. The police department came up to us.
We weren't involved with the school. Ed reform was supposed to be-
Back in 92.
93. I looked it up.
92.
Okay.
When it started in 92, part of the Ed reform was for any school negotiations of contract, a representative, either a board member or their representative from the Select Board is supposed to be on part of the negotiating team.
Have we been doing that?
You did it for a while under Pat Stevens and then when Pat Stevens left it sort and went off the wayside. So, what I'd like to do is where maybe the board should send a letter reminding the school committee and the superintendent that for any collective bargaining or any contract negotiations, that a member of the board of selectmen needs to be included as part of the bargaining team.
So, this is more that you want a representative where they participate in their contract.
As directed by the Ed reform law.
Right, so it's not really, everybody should have the same cost of living rates.
We just want to have some-
No, I'm just asking for copies of the contracts so they could be public records so I can review them. So, when I'm looking at different people.
Oh, I agree with that.
That's all I'm, that's all I-
Because I have no idea what to base anything on.
Me neither. That's all I'm asking for. I don't see what's wrong with that. They're all public contracts.
That was the most convoluted question ever, Jay. I was lost.
Well, that's what I meant. I asked for copies of the contracts that we don't have so we can look at them so we're in negotiations with the other people. We have an idea who's on first, what's on second, and I don't know who's on third.
Stooge.
Whatever. But you know what I'm trying to say? I like to treat everybody equal.
There's a difference in equality.
The police department, because that was brought forward by the chief.
We have the contracts from our side of the table.
Right.
We don't have anything from the school's side because nobody participates on that side.
I'm not saying that. There are some contracts that we have. We just don't have something from the school. We've seen other contracts.
He wants-
Every contract in the town at Granby. That's all he's saying.
No, I understand that, but we do have, I don't want, we do have contracts except for the school.
We have two contracts. Police and fire.
Right. We just don't have the school. Right. So, we've seen those.
I have.
Police and fire?
Probably one year when it came up and that's all.
I wasn't here.
That's all.
But we can get them too.
That would be nice. Have you seen them, Jack? Do you need them?
Well, I haven't seen the police. The only one I've seen is the fire because I was the liaison at the time we started negotiations. The only one I've seen is the fire because I was liaison at the time we started negotiations. And negotiations are still ongoing in the fire. So I have no idea what the police even looks like. I'd like to see them all. I'm not trying to pick on anybody in particular.
And I guess we could ask the school to see them. If we're sending a gentle reminder that this is what should be happening. We can also include in that reminder or request.
Yeah, we can include anything.
That the board wishes.
Nicely worded. It would be most likely accommodated.
That has to come from Kathy. She's the nice letter person. I'm the bad letter person.
We're just adding more work for you, Kathy. I'm sorry.
I think at this point of this, it should be reminded to the school committee there is responsibility of the member from the select board to be part of that. And I think at this time, either this week or next meeting, is to name the person. This will be the person that will be representing the board at that point. Just clear it all up at that time. That would be my take. If we're going to do that, let's just put everything down in one particular letter to them. And that's it's over with.
I see the draft. I'll read it, and it's just like both of you will read it and see if you agree or disagree. That's all I'm asking.
I hope I'm just saying at that point, we should name a board member that's actually going to be the person.
Basically, there is on...
Right, but we don't know when the next...
Contract is due. It might be two, three, four years, and none of us may not even be here by then. All we can have is the existing contracts.
Right.
So I wouldn't want to name anybody now.
Well, we'll know when the contract...
What we can do is make it part of the procedure of the board that when you do your annual appointments, you appoint the representative of the board to the negotiating team.
If they're needed, they're needed. If they're not...
Yeah.
They're not.
But what I'm saying is that we'll know when the contract is up, when the end date is. Chris, we're going to get a copy of it. Or that's simple enough as a phone call, I think, from Chris, just to find out when the contract ends so you know when negotiations will be starting. And these usually start before the contract ends. Usually the year before they end, they start negotiations.
Pair, teachers?
Teachers.
I thought it was the pairs.
I thought the teachers are just done, but that's like been like two years in negotiations, something like that.
Yeah, I thought that was the pair. It could be the... I don't know. It was one of them that just got signed.
Jay, do you want to go over your energy committee thing?
Oh, yeah. The easiest way to this is go to the last page. As well as being on one board and two committees in this town, I'm also the alternate Pioneer Valley Planning Commission Commissioner for Granby. And I also serve on a couple of committees at Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. And one of them is on this energy stuff. And we've been putting together stuff for the Pioneer Valley as requested because there's so many towns been getting sued for all these solar bylaws. So all we're trying to do here by this from the energy committee is we want to make sure that the green community requirements are in our bylaws so we can apply for grants. And in addition to that, we've given you recommendations from all the people in all the communities that have already passed theirs in the back on what they're doing so we don't have to reinvent the wheel. That's all I was trying to say. But we want to make sure that when we... We currently have a green community application in today, which we haven't heard back on. I would sore hate all of a sudden to say, well, we can't approve it because you don't meet the... Your bylaws don't meet the green community requirements. We've already had a couple of violations with we had a right corrective action plans on. One was from the highway department, and one was from the school. We want to make sure.
These are all the recommendations? This is what... These are requirements to meet?
These are not requirements. The requirements for the...
What's the requirement? All things as requirement. It's what's...
On the green community side, we did the requirements clarification. Everything else from there on is not.
Just break it, that's it.
Right. That's what we did for the green community. The only thing that we put in there, we did put in number 50 because there was no number defined. Because a solar canopy, believe it or not, is not considered a structure. It's considered a ground-mounted solar installation.
That would make sense. It's attached to the ground.
No, a canopy is above, like a parking lot.
I know.
Okay.
But it's attached to the parking lot, which is attached to the ground.
Yeah.
It becomes ground-mounted.
But this building could have a solar installation on it, and it wouldn't be considered...
Not if it's attached to its roof. Then it would be...
It's attached to the roof of the canopy.
So these, just some...
Just giving you a hard time, Jay.
Yeah, yeah.
These are what is required to meet the green community.
Right.
Okay.
Right. And then we gave you the references, and then we gave you the references where we copied them from.
What's all the other stuff that's on there?
All the other ones are from other...
Other bylaws?
Other bylaws of other towns on how they've addressed it to keep themselves in because the planning board is... The purpose is to protect the community and its resources to conserve the value of the land and buildings to encourage the most appropriate use of land within the town. And these are the way these different towns have referenced the way that they do that. I got an example. Frontage, Route 202, any street. Frontage is valuable land. The land away in the back isn't. So what are these towns are saying? Put the solar, set them back. Leave my frontage alone. I can have houses. I can have businesses. I can make money off them up front. Don't put them up front. So that's what the thought process from these other towns have all done. Also, it's...
If it's that person's land, then he can do whatever he wants. If he wants to set it back 400 feet off the road, why would he?
Depends what the bylaw says. It's just like when you've got a two-and-a-half-ton truck. You've got to have it behind a fence because the bylaw says so.
But what I'm saying, though, you kind of gave examples. So the person owns that piece of property. It's his property. He can... If he says, just in reference to the bylaw you just said there, or wherever that's coming from, as far as so they have frontage, that's that person's property or that business's property. So they can say, no, instead of you having a solar farm here, you can have it back 500 feet off. So they control that.
Actually, the planning board is supposed to put the bylaws into place to make the maximum use of the land, the value of the land.
But that person controls that piece. Whoever owns that land, there is requirements set by... Or bylaws that are set by the people, not by the planning board.
That's correct.
I'm just making a point where that would be. So if I own a piece of property, and I own three acres, and the frontage is on 202, and I said, gee, that frontage, 400 feet, 500 feet, that frontage is worth money. And we can have someone do a solar field, and I can say, well, gee, you go back on the other side because that's worth more money to me. They're controlling their own property and setting their value, what they want to do with the property.
The people control the bylaws. If the people think the frontage is... Should be left alone, then the people can write the bylaws to it.
I just, Jay, I'm just making a point to what you said. That's all. That person who owns that controls as far as...
As long as they do it within the town's bylaws.
I understand that, Jay. I'm just going back to kind of what you said. That person controls where he's going to put it. Now, outside the by... Not taking the bylaws out of it. He controls or she controls or the business controls where that would go with anything.
As long as in accordance with the town bylaws and any other statute laws, building codes, or whatever. Yeah, so it would be yes.
Yes, I understand that. I'm just going back to your point where the person would want to... The bylaws protecting the person's property up front on the frontage. When it's that person's property, it's he's or he or...
If the bylaws read the solar fields had to be 300-foot setback, then the solar fields would be 300-foot setback.
Yeah.
If the bylaws don't read they have to be a certain feet setback, they could be on the roadside.
I'm not disputing that, Jay. I'm just... The example that you gave, I'm not going to go around and around with it. The example that you gave, I'm just saying, doesn't make sense to me when you said it because you said you wanted that person's property. It's more valuable to that person if he had frontage.
It's more valuable to the town.
It's not the town's property. So that person, I don't understand how it's valuable to the town.
I understand, I think.
Because if you read the purpose of Massachusetts General Law of the planning board and our own solar bylaws, the purpose of them is to protect the community and its natural resources, to conserve the value of the land in the buildings, to encourage the most appropriate use of the land within the town.
I think...
If your bylaws allow it, then it's...
But I think what he's saying is, let's just say you and I were neighbors, okay? I had 500-foot of frontage, and I decided I was going to put up this large monstrosity. And your property value just plummeted because who wants to live next to what some would consider an eyesore? That's not protecting the town's interest because now they've lost tax rolls.
That's not what he said, though.
That is what I read.
He's roundabout. I've learned to...
That's what he said, Jay.
But can I ask you, Jay?
Yes.
What was the reason that you chose Berry, Belch Town, North Hampton, Chutes Berry, and West Hampton?
Because they're all approved by the state Attorney General's Office.
Those are the only ones around us?
No, there's more.
Correct. Berry is the only one that's been... Three weeks ago, Berry was the only one that's been approved by the Attorney General's Office.
That's not what we were told. The only one that...
That's what we were told in a meeting from the representative from the planning board.
The other ones besides Berry.
Right. So, but just to answer your question, Jay, we've... They've... The planning board has looked at a couple of those that are actually listed already, so...
Well, I'm just telling you, all the ones that we looked at have been approved by the Attorney General's Office with the exception of Belch Town's latest changes, which are due to be... Their 90 days is up in two weeks.
I wasn't looking to start a debate. I just didn't know if it was demographics. That's all I was asking.
No, I was just trying to make the most money revenue we can for the town overall.
So we just went by the ones that had approved plans.
Right. And then, and they were kind of residential out here in Western Mass. We didn't pick anything from the eastern part of the state. You know, trying to keep...
Because all of them are smaller except for North Hampton.
Right.
That's why North Hampton threw me off, and I didn't... I thought I... It was because we were going to more of an agricultural residential.
Well, we actually were, but they... But they're approved. They've already got their bylaws approved.
That's all. That was my question. Simple.
And if anybody has any other questions, the media, the members of the energy committee here, if they want to ask them. Because one thing you have to understand with the energy side, all municipalities in the foreseeable future are getting close. I mean, measured for greenhouse gas emissions. And if you cut all your trees down, you don't have any weight.
You have nothing to suck it up.
That's right. So the references, what they're doing on a lot of these is, you want to take a tree down here, put a solar farm, fine. Replant trees over here.
Fair.
So you're either neutral or you can maximize the greenhouse gas reduction. And that's all that's in this stuff.
What's up, Glenn?
So the Granby Energy Committee will be sending this to the planning board?
No. No. We have to send it to here because the Granby Energy Committee is...
So is that what you want to do then? That's what you're looking to do at this point?
Right, try and help.
Okay.
Because when we talked before, we talked about, you want this to be a team effort, and we'll point out the requirements of the green community, and anything else we find? So that's what we did.
No, I think it's important, as you just stated, Jay.
And then we gave you all the references.
Jay, can I please just keep talking, please? I'm saying, I think it's important what you said about this, how making sure that we meet the requirements to meet the green community, because I think that's very, very important. I want to make sure that... That's why I asked. This is everything that needs to be in the bylaws to meet it, correct?
No, that's criteria one, right, Lil? But yes, not all... There's more criteria. The existing bylaws meet the other criteria already.
Okay, so this is the one you think it does not meet?
Right.
Okay. That's why I want to make sure that this is something that's going to be...
Right, because we don't want to lose that...
We're in the process now, and it's, you know, it's going to be the public meetings.
Well, that's why we thought we'd go through and we'd share all this stuff with you. Can we just put this on the town's website with both of them? Because they're both going to be going out anyway. They'll be public documents. And if anybody wants to review them as far as updated solar bylaws, because, you know...
No, they haven't been approved.
We should wait until they hold their public hearing and then put them up there.
Okay, that's right. I'm just asking.
Updated, yeah.
When they hold your public hearing is when they become official.
Oh, okay.
Public documents.
That's what I mean, that's been updated yet.
Right.
Yeah.
I would wait until you schedule your hearing.
Yeah, I would wait till it's official.
And then go from there.
Well, I'm just saying, since we presented it here, I didn't know if it became public to be presented it here or not. Okay, that's why I asked the question.
Should you guys make a motion to send that to the...
Not yet, we haven't. They're still chatting.
I'm chatting.
Okay, well, in that case, I... Stop laughing. I will make the motion to send the draft of the updated solar ground-mounted bylaws recommended by the Granby Energy Committee to Glenn over at the planning board.
No, it's not Glenn. It's the planning board.
For their consideration.
For their consideration.
I'll second the motion.
Any more discussion on the energy committee bylaws?
Do you want me to just sign that letter to the planning board when you have more?
Yeah, that's all it is. It's just transferring documents. And you want to include it in the motion that we just let Chris do it?
And I will include in the motion that Chris may sign up for us.
Okay. Is there any more discussion on the energy committee solar bylaw recommendations? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Okay, there's two ayes and one abstention.
Gentlemen, that was a circus.
It's going to get better.
Anything else for us, Mr. Chair?
I don't know if they want to consider this document or wave it to the next one Glenn's aside today from the planning board because it was due August the 8th.
But that document may change as a result of...
Of your...
Right.
Of what was just presented by you tonight.
Right, so this is just for information, meeting the deadline?
This, right, that's information.
For meeting the suspense.
From the planning board to the select board. That was discussed. That is the recommendations at the current time.
Okay. So it's just information. Oh, there's one other thing. Uncorrespondence. I noticed there was a letter from a Belch Town resident to the select board. Basically, pretty much discussion about the Cub Scouts. I think we should, since he addressed it to us, we should send a letter back to him that's under the purview of the Board of Health?
He's asking me that they are supposed to send this to the Board of Health.
Okay, so we don't have to acknowledge it? I just didn't want to get a letter from somebody and not acknowledge it?
They also sent it to the Board of Health.
Okay, then I missed that. I just didn't want to see us... People send us stuff and we don't address it, is all I'm trying to say.
I'm sorry, Kathy. How do we know that it was sent to them?
Because it should be the top of the Board of Health.
It does, but do we know that it actually went to them and they're not just thinking...
There were two.
Okay.
There were two, okay.
Okay.
Because if a resident wants to write to us, we should acknowledge receipt. That's all I'm saying. What was that?
Not even a Granby resident. I'm sorry. I'm in a not-nice mood right now.
Okay, I don't see anything else on the agenda unless anybody else has anything.
I have something that's not on the agenda that I would like the board to think about.
Okay.
And it actually somewhat pertains to this letter.
Is it the Cub Scout?
Regarding the Cub Scouts. So there was a lot of discussion on Facebook regarding this whole incident, as always occurs. And I had made the comment that there were other things that could have been done to mitigate the circumstances so you can't pin it on one... There were a whole few parties to blame. Mr. Williams then pointed out to me that he actually had tried to call whoever he could think of in town to see what other options in town that they could do. He stopped calling people at 9:00 out of respect, which led me to realize we don't have an after-hours emergency number unless you're calling the police station.
Well, I was under the impression we call 4679 Triple Deuce, which is the dispatcher at the safety complex.
Correct, it's the non-emergency number.
And they can contact any person in Granby of a department head. They're all listed there.
Yes, and I understand that. My question is, on a busy... Not that Granby is overly inundated with calls, but on a busy night, they may not have time. Is it something that we can implement where we have somewhat of a manager on duty? One weekend, each department head, one weekend a month? That could take these non-emergency calls and direct them to the appropriate avenue? That was what I was asked to ask.
I have a problem with that. Because you may have a manager on duty, you may not know the answer.
And the wrong information comes out?
Well, no, and I'm not saying that the manager, the manager, quote-unquote, manager on duty would be the one giving the answers. But, so...
But they got to have to know where to refer it to.
Well, that's why we would have manager on duty that knew what was happening. It wouldn't just be... I'm not saying, oh, Kathy, but we wouldn't just say, oh, Kathy's, you know... Or Mr. Nally. You know, it would be, either it would be fire chief, police chief. Sorry, Chris. Chris. Something where someone has a resource after hours. That was what the town had requested that I ask. Or members of the town.
I guess when I look at...
But the...
You have to distinguish what is an emergency in the first place. And I think if, when I look at it, what is an emergency, it's... That falls under the purview of the fire chief and the police chief in the town.
Except this situation, not an emergency. It was definitely time-sensitive.
Time-sensitive is correct.
Doesn't fall under either fire or police.
No, but again, I go back to it's time-sensitive, but it's an emergency. But he also called people who didn't... I could be wrong because I don't know the whole thing, Jen, if I am, just correct me. But I know he did call the people that control that particular area.
He did not.
He did not. So he didn't call the...
Because he could not figure out... So Parks is not listed on the website. He couldn't even find it.
But he called the health inspector.
And they weren't Mr... From his... From his response, he was not getting response. And then it was said that he never got the... Either way.
But I understand what you're saying.
But he had called Jim Petrus, and Jim said, you know, I'm not on that committee anymore. I don't know what to tell you. So, and he finally stopped calling at 9:00. So he had just, you know, said, is there a go-to? And I said, I don't know. he had just, you know, said, is there a go to? And I said, I don't know. I would assume. And then come to find out, we don't have a go to for non-emergency time sensitive issues.
The concern I would have with that is. That the cell phone numbers do not be given out, because then they're going to bypass, because everything they feel is an emergency.
I'm not saying give out numbers, but if you have.
Here's my recommendation. As far as that, someone look into time sensitive information. They can contact a member of the Select Board who are elected officials for the town, and we can reach out to those department heads or those people that would have the information. I think that would be fair. So you would you could start calling around, saying, look, I need to talk to so and so. You could start making the phone calls to find out the information. Hey, so and so's been trying to get ahold of you. Can you please?
I think that's all they're asking for, to be honest.
I think it's any elected official. I think that's our responsibility. So if they wish to contact us.
I'm using the term manager on duty, but I think that is what they're looking for. Someone that they can contact when it's not an emergency, but it's time sensitive.
And that's I mean, that's where I would be, that they reach out, because again, I don't like, you'd have to kind of two things, I think, few things come into play. I think it gets a little gray if you start calling people who don't have the correct information at that point, or give out the right the wrong information. But also, certain people have contracts and that may not be part of the contract. And if you are on call, is someone going to pay them for being on call? So I think it's as elected officials, that's us, and then we can start, you know what? We'll follow up and I can start making phone calls. It's 11 o'clock at night. I don't see this being an emergency, but first thing in the morning, I'll start making some phone calls and see what kind of information I can get back to you on.
Yeah, I think.
I think it's our job as elected officials.
Personally, I think we just need some system in place. That's all.
You know, I think and I know.
The town administrator is not the first person to call. Let's see where to go to.
But I think that's but I think that's I think as elected official, I think that should be the the avenue that someone is is looking for. That would be, you know, and then give us, you know, we can start making phone calls. You know, we all know enough people to get what information that may may apply to it. And if we call for this instance, I'm just saying, this for this particular thing that came up, we can make calls to the health, you know, the health officials, the health inspector, and we ask them to return our phone calls for this particular thing. Because that's we're going to make calls to the appropriate, the appropriate people that need to answer those questions. And I think that's we cannot control it if we don't get a call back right away. That's something we can't control.
And I'm not saying that.
But I understand someone's I understand. I understand a lot of the frustration around this.
On both, on all sides.
Yes, absolutely. Because a lot of people are affected by it, absolutely.
And I think they're just looking to the future. How do we mitigate this?
I know yourself, Jay, and myself are all on Facebook, and someone pops something up on Facebook, can so and so please contact me. 99% of the time, they get contacted. So I think if someone puts that, is there, you know, is there a Select Board member that can please contact me?
Yeah, there's also people that don't are not on Facebook that might need access the same way.
In which case, we just let that information out there. That if something is necessary after hours, you can.
If that's what you two want to do, then I want to need a number for every department head, because I don't have them. I mean, I don't do that. What I have done, just like when the pump, the well pump went out on Saturday, I had them call 4679 Triple Deuce, which is the dispatcher, give them the information, and the dispatcher will notify the appropriate person. They did that and the well was taken care of. That's the way I've been doing it.
Which is which is fine. They contacted you, you made necessary calls, and they got taken care of.
Well, I didn't make the necessary. I gave them the phone number to call.
Oh, they called.
They called.
Well, they still you say they gave them the correct information.
Yeah, I gave them 4679 Triple Deuce, which is the non-emergency dispatch number. And I said, if you call this person, they will notify the appropriate person.
But you gave them the information they needed to have.
So there is that number for non-emergency and I would and I think I don't think anyone's ever probably want anybody contacting us for information on who to contact in particular incident. I think that's that's fair to say.
If somebody calls me because a tree goes down, do you want me to contact Mr. DeRozier or you want me to contact Mr. Martin?
You you tell them this is the number to call.
This was the highway department.
Right, this is who you call, blah, 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 4679 Triple Deuce. That's the number you call. If you don't get a response to something, as you elected official, you can call me back and I'll try to find out some more information for you. That's I mean, that's I wouldn't go any further than that. I mean, that's, again, you're elected official for the town. That's you're doing to help the residents.
Normally, dispatch has the numbers to reach all the department heads.
That's why I gave them that number, okay?
Right. That's what I'm saying. You just provide them with the number. They don't get, you know, someone doesn't get a necessary response in a quick time or whatever time they think is reasonable, they may call you back and so be it. That's that's part of the job.
Part of what we signed up for.
So I continue to do the same thing, have them call 4679 Triple Deuce.
Have them call whoever you want.
Yes, Jen.
Yes, that works. I'm sorry I asked that question.
You were talking about notifying department heads. That's why I'm asking, because that is not a department head. That's a dispatch office. Yes.
She was just saying, is there is there some someone that can be called to help out with the information if someone needs certain information after hours?
To direct them to the proper.
Appropriate party.
I think it was the basis of the question.
It was. He hasn't learned Jen's speak yet.
You know, I'm going to be honest with you. I don't have everybody's phone number.
No, I don't either.
The issue is, though, I know Board of Health, I got Dick Bomadere's number. I can I can call him and let.
I got lots of them.
But what I'm just saying, but but the issue is, is, you know, I know Dave DeRozier's number. I do know the fire chief's number. I do know. But that's their personal cell phone numbers that I have.
Which you wouldn't give out. You would call them directly and say, hey, this is the issue. Can you reach out to?
That's what I'm saying. I don't want to release those numbers. I won't release those.
And you shouldn't.
Because the minute someone gets it, oh, I don't need to go through them. I just I'll just call direct.
Right.
That's again, that's exactly what I'm saying, Chris. That's why the call would come to one of us as an elected official for the town and we would.
We would direct.
Direct it where it needs to go.
And then say, hey, this person called. Here's their number. Could you please call them back?
Call these people. They should be able to help you. If you don't get a response or you don't get help, please call me back and I'll look into the matter further. I think it's a simple. If you've watched G. Campbell, know what to do now.
Yeah.
469 or 4679 Triple Two.
And just so you know, Jay, that is a recorded line.
I know it is.
So instead of dialing 911, if you dial that, it's still a recorded.
Still a recorded line. No, that's why I sent them there. Seeing nothing else in the agenda, and I'm going to ask one last time. Does anybody else have anything else?
Nope.
Then do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
I'll second Jen's motion.
No more discussion on adjourning? Everybody who wants to adjourn, say aye.
Aye.